I'd like to call to order the Yuba City Council January 17th, 2017 Regular Meeting. With that, I'd -- roll call, please.
Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dibball.
Here.
Councilman Buckland.
Here.
Councilman Cardoza.
Here.
Councilman Harris.
Okay, can we all rise and do the invocation? And then we'll have Councilmember Buckland do the pledge. "We want to thank you, oh Lord God, for your help in the past and thank you for the stability that you bring to our lives. We pray now that whatever we do this evening would bring strength and prosperity and stability to our community and that we would serve the people as we are tasked to, Lord God. We pray these things in your name. Amen."
Mr. Luke, the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. We're going to pause for a moment on this agenda and actually ask for the new CAO of Sutter County to be presented and introduced and I hopefully welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm not the new CAO, I'm your city manager, Steve Kragger. But it does give me great pleasure to introduce the new county administrative officer, Scott Mitnick. And he has agreed to come over. He does have a busy schedule this evening, so, Mr. Mayor, thank you for agreeing to have him appear on the front end. Just a brief introduction, Scott was actually with our city for three years. In the late 1990s, I had the pleasure of actually fulfilling his role upon his departure. What excites me the most is that he was brought to this community at that time for a reason. He shared the community's vision for quality service, innovation, and leadership. He's the same man today that I know from back then. And so, in terms of city-county cooperative efforts as we move forward in our relationship, it's extremely positive from the staff perspective. So I'd invite Scott to come down and say a few words, and if you have any words for him, please do share as well. Scott.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, it's a privilege and honor to be here, and I was thinking when I walked in, the last time I was in this room was 17 years ago, I think this month, or it might have been in December of 99, to say goodbye in my final meeting. I used to sit right over here, and so brings back a lot of positive memories. So the, as I said to the board the night that they voted on my contract, Yuba City is a lot better today than it was then, and if you think about where it will be 17 years from now, it'll be even better. So I look forward to being able to work with all of you and with Steve and the departments and the community to help both the Board of Supervisors and the City Council realize your vision for the community. And I really am looking forward to working with Steve. This was working, the ability to work with Steve again was a big incentive to come up here, and I think you'll see and hear more about a tremendous spirit of cooperation between the two entities. And the greatest strength we have is that of our employees. So you have terrific employees, the county has terrific employees, so we look forward to working together with all of you. Thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Okay, welcome, Scott. Okay, moving on to item number one, and Chief Landon is already on his way up.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, councilmembers. The item before you tonight is to accept grant funding expenditure recommendations for the California Citizens Option for Public Safety Shortened to COPs Grant in the amount of $100,000. And this is a public hearing. Each year, each year dependent upon the state budget priorities, funds may be allocated to law enforcement agencies to assist and carry out priorities as established by the chief of police and his staff. Over the last several years, monies have been made available through the state of California to local law enforcement entities in the form of the COPs grant. This year, the city of Yuba City Police, Yuba City will receive approximately $100,000. The state government code restricts the money to be used for frontline law enforcement expenses and may not be used to supplant any existing law enforcement services provided by the city. We have been notified by the State Department of Finance, again, that the approximate dollar amount is $100,000 to $108,000. Police Department has traditionally utilized the funding obtained in this grant for the major approval expenditure category of technology advancements. In the past, we've used it for such categories as a complete infrastructure upgrade of a police radio system, inclusive of the acquisition of a secondary repeater, radio frequency and related equipment, the Sutter Buttes Radio Interoperability Project Phase One, emergency operations center retrofit, a total service weapon upgrade for all officers, equipping all patrol vehicles with mobile data terminals integrated with the police communications center, and many other upgrades. This past year, we use the money specifically for body cameras, for individual personal body cameras, and for the three cameras that we placed in different locations that are able to be moved to monitor different areas for directed enforcement, the ones down in the camp or down in Richland Housing Center and several others throughout the area. Some of the money this year will be utilized to purchase a smart board for training, a new live scan for fingerprinting, a drying closet for evidence, and the remainder will be used for specialized equipment for patrol, night vision goggles, nightlights for handguns for patrol, and a new Honda 2000 generator. The way that we come about the deciding what we need for the department is to meet as different groups, with the technology group, with the sergeants, and with the staff, and we come up with ideas, and at the end of that, we prioritize based on the greatest needs of the department, and this is what we ended up with. The fiscal impact is $100,000 to the account 2180-69201. There is no matching grant required. The alternative would be provide staff with alternative spending paths which will not supplant routine expenditures in the general fund, and the recommendation is conduct a public hearing and after consideration, adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept the fiscal year 2016-17 COPs funding and approve expenditure recommendations. Further authorized, the chief financial officer to make budget adjustments as necessary. And with that, I'll open it up for questions, Mayor.
Any questions from, at this time? Okay, with that, I'll open up the public hearing for the Citizens Option for Public Safety or COP grant. Is there anybody that would like to go up and speak in regarding to this? Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion or action.
I'd move for approval.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers.
Okay, moving on to ordinances, and Arnaldo, you're going to be up there.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item before you this evening is the second reading of an ordinance update to the Yuba City Municipal Code specifically regarding the 2016 California Building Standards Code and Building Regulations Ordinance. The state of California updates its building code in three-year cycles. The cycle that we're in right now began January the 1st of this year and will go through December the 31st of 2019. While cities are not mandated to update their codes to reflect the California standard, the California standards do become effective immediately throughout the state of California. However, there are some benefits for local jurisdictions to update their local codes. City staff at this time is not proposing any modifications to the adopted city step or to the state guidelines, and we are recommending that the city council this evening adopt the ordinance as presented and waive the second reading. Thank you.
This was presented previously in this, as you said, is a second reading. Any discussion? Anybody from the public have any comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Action?
I'll make a motion to move.
I'll say it.
Choose whichever one you want in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, seeing none, unanimous vote. Moving on to number three, Jim Matthews, I see you there. The retired Jim Matthews.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. I'm Jim Matthews, your retired fire marshal and interim for a while.
Thank you.
When I was here last time, we introduced the latest edition of the Fire Code ordinance, and essentially, I'm not going to restate what was just said, so, the Fire Code is really a component of the building code, so everything he said, in addition to what I'm about to say. Two issues popped up last time. One was fireworks, and one was a letter from local civil engineer Gary Loughlin. We talked at length, at least it felt like at length to me, regarding the fireworks. So, the fireworks are two issues with fireworks. The safe and sane fireworks, which are legal in California, as my opinion, are not really the problem, and that's what the component, the regulation of them, is what's in this ordinance today. The unlawful fireworks, which are unlawful in the entire state of California, are the problem that we have, just like virtually every other city in the state of California, how to deal with the expanding use of the unlawful fireworks. So I would ask that we keep in mind that the safe and sane are what's on the ordinance tonight, the unlawful fireworks are a completely separate issue. With regard to the letter from Mr. Loughlin, I did have the opportunity to meet with him last Friday, that's the first opportunity he had to meet, and really, it was a minor misunderstanding of the interpretation of the code, our local fire sprinkler ordinance and how it relates to the state code with respect to residential fire sprinklers. We worked through that, that became a non-issue, and then we just had a very good philosophical discussion. Gary Loughlin and I have had a longstanding working relationship, and we haven't always agreed, but we've always come away with a solution, and that's where we were, that's how we, where we got to on Friday, and I don't see him here, so I'm very confident that he was satisfied with our meeting and our discussion. So with that, I will try to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions or comments from staff? I mean, council? Seeing none? If the public has any comments on it, they can come forward and, okay, looking for some action?
Mayor?
Yes?
We did have a written request to speak from John.
Yeah. Are you Terrell?
Yes.
On, hold on.
Do you want to talk about, we decided to put it here since it was regarding the...
Okay, yes, yes, and so you've decided to put it here? Please go to the podium, just say your name and chat.
Thank you.
Yes, we did speak today.
We did. Hi, well, my name is John Deula. I'm a 14-year homeowner and resident of Yuba City. Before I begin, I want to thank all of you for just being amazing, providing the services that you guys provide, all of you, to this wonderful city. I'd also like to personally thank John Buckland, Mayor Cleveland, who I had the honor of speaking to today, John Whitaker, and Chief Landon, who I just got to, I've talked to you many times in the past as well, and also to Terrell for being gracious enough from bumping me from three to five minutes tonight. This is the first time I've attended a city council meeting, and in light of how much I'd like to say, I want to also apologize in advance if I speak quickly due to that five-minute limit. I'm here tonight to address the issue of illegal fireworks. I live a few blocks south of Franklin and to the west of Walton near Cherry. The problem that we're having starts well before the 4th of July, in fact, weeks before sometimes, 4th of July, and can extend for weeks and even months afterwards, as well as New Year's Eve. In fact, last night, someone close to us was lighting off these mortars and launching these illegal and dangerous fireworks into the air, starting at about 1:30 in the morning, and they continued well past 4:00 a.m. They sound like bombs waking us up and rattling our windows. The best way to describe the issue that we're experiencing is similar to the night that our country entered the first Gulf War in Iraq, and I think a news anchor put it best, and he described it as shock and awe, and that's pretty much what we're experiencing. Each year, I feel like a prisoner in my own home. Come the 4th of July and New Year's Eve, my neighbors and I have to hose down our roofs from our homes, not to mention what our pets go through. All of us, all of you in attendance, I'm sure will agree that each year, the problem of dealing with these explosives is getting worse and worse. I'm 52-years-old. When I was a kid, I mean, the only time you would see explosives like this is if you were in a high-end pyrotechnics display or perhaps even at Disneyland. These things are not firecrackers, they're high-end explosives. Last year, the morning after the 4th, I found holes in my pool cover from these incendiaries. I found not one, but two of these fireworks on the roof of my home, one on the roof and the other in the rain gutter. Three years ago, on July 5th, a bush no less than 10 feet away from my home caught on fire from these fireworks that had been smoldering overnight at the base of the bush. If it wasn't for my neighbor who saw the smoke and the flames and took the garden hose to put out the fire, the result could have meant disaster for me. So here I am, just one homeowner, and I've experienced not just one, but three dangerous circumstances due to these fireworks. I'm frustrating, frustrated in that it seems like nothing's being done. Each time I call the Yuba City Police, I'm told to call the county sheriff's department because of where I live. I live on the county, or in the county, excuse me. Both agencies have confessed that unless they actually see someone lighting off these illegal explosives, there's really nothing they can do, not to mention that they don't have the manpower to respond to all the calls that they receive. What's very concerning to me is that if I myself can drive down any street on the 4th of July, I can see illegal fireworks being discharged from backyards and actually people setting these off in the middle of the street. Yet, nothing is being done, and there are, from my understanding, very few if any citations being written. Everyone is claiming that their hands are tied, that there isn't enough money to throw out the problem, which I find baffling. I therefore wanted to offer a very simple solution that would hopefully solve this issue. The first is to use the city's social host ordinance that, actually, Mayor, you and I discussed this morning, that would hold homeowners and Mayor, or, excuse me, John Buckland, we talked about this as well, to hold the homeowners responsible for these criminal activities. I recommend that all homeowners be put on notice well before the 4th, that the city and county are going to implement a zero-tolerance approach to find not only the individuals responsible, but find the homeowners of up to $10,000 or $20,000 for each offense, to set a precedence in an effort to control the issue of illegal fireworks. In most cases, it's usually just bad, you know, homeowners or renters, or possibly even slum lords, who simply don't care. They realize that nothing is going to be done, they have nothing really to lose. I would say a very real and possible solution to this would be to put up some drones, some quadcopters, in the area. I've already spoken to a few pilots who are professional commercial pilots in this area who said it would be easy to do. You put up four or five drones in any specific area, they're mobile, they could direct law enforcement exactly to the home that's launching these fireworks. Not only that, but you'd be able to be able to provide video proof as well of where these incendiaries are coming from. You know, I speak, I believe, for many of my neighbors, and we feel like prisoners in our own home. Come these two holidays, it's difficult. I would love to enjoy the 4th of July just like everyone else, but I'm stuck. I'm worried about my home catching on fire, I'm worried about my dog under the bed. It's frustrating. I pay my property taxes to make sure that both the city and the county provide me with a safe place to live, and more importantly, to do their job. And I know, I apologize, so I've gone over five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to sum it up in that I'm concerned, there is a solution. I ask therefore our city council to possibly put together a task force, I would love to participate in it, provide some sort of solution for us so we can combat this issue. Thank you.
Is there, at this time, any response that anybody would like to have regarding some of his recommendation or anything?
I just have some comments because we have spoke on a number of different occasions by phone, this is the first time that I've actually put a face to it, but I have the very same concerns that he has. Short of a moratorium that would affect nonprofits in our area, shutting down fireworks for a year may be one of the solutions. Again, that's a pretty drastic move to make. Came from a community as a kid that didn't allow fireworks, and that was the city of Napa. They still don't allow fireworks, and part of that is from the illegal activities that were occurring back in those days, and also the grass fires that would occur as a result of it. You know, I think that as a community, we need to get together, we need to find a solution. One of those solutions may be to fund and organize a public display, because I've noticed, and I think our discussions have been, that over the course of time, once the public display at Ellis Lake or the River Bottoms or wherever it was held at various times, once that came to an end, you saw, or we have experienced, a proliferation of illegal fireworks being displayed in neighborhoods where they don't belong. And they don't belong anywhere in California, I should say, but nonetheless, in neighborhoods. So something needs to be done. I think we need to explore it, and I would make that recommendation that this body put together a ad hoc committee to build a, to work on that.
Okay, and then, but also, I would say you need to be involved, and other people that would like to come in and get involved. So I think, kind of develop a task force in some way. TNT that provides a lot of the, of course, we have Phantom TNT, and now there's a new one. They do have model ordinances that are available for us to do, to consider. Most of them don't have heavy teeth in them because of our, you know, our constitution, a lot of it is, and our rights, so, but there are some things that we can discuss to do. And then, of course, the drastic course that, one year recommendation that people don't learn, that could be considered at another time, but I think we need to actually get it out in the public and really get this fully vetted, so, so we'll see what happens with that.
Sir, excuse me, first of all, forgive me, I missed your name, I didn't write it down.
I'm sorry, John Deula?
John?
Yeah.
I want to thank you for coming here today. Now, you have a problem, you have a concern, you have a legitimate concern, you came here, you're very articulate, you have positive examples, relevant examples. I was feeling for you, burned a hole in the pool cover and your dogs and all that nonsense going on by people who clearly don't care about anything but themselves. And so, I concur with the mayor and Councilman Buckland that we will put together something to address that. I know we can work with the sheriff's department and the police department, and I might have access to a few highway patrolmen, and we can definitely work on that, and I think it's very, the public education and getting the note, the word out there ahead of time serves its purpose, but these people who are doing that, in my opinion, know they're doing something illegal. The time has come to pull out the ticket book and maybe even take some people to jail if we need to, to get that message out there, in my opinion.
Can I have your check over?
Perhaps, yes.
I just want to, Tim Anis, I guess, do you know him? He's the fire marshal for Davis. Really nice guy. He said they fixed the issue back in the 1950s, and as a whole, he said, they completely outlawed fireworks. And I agree with John.
If you're going to, you know, we really need to move on, we understand. That's something that'll happen during the discussion of the task force and stuff.
We'll discuss that, but I just want to express my appreciation for you, your concern. I want you to know that you've been heard, and we, and I completely agree with you.
Okay, there was, there was, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, the voice from over here. Just a couple options for you to consider. You can ask staff to bring this back in the form of a staff report for decision, given the fact that it is on your council, so not to confuse the public, oftentimes, people from the public will come and speak on a matter and the council is unable to comment upon it because it's not agendized. This matter is agendized for this evening's meeting, so if you do decide that you would like to appoint any sort of ad hoc committee meeting to, pardon me, committee, you could do so tonight, or of course defer it back to staff for a staff report. Thank you.
You want to do an ad hoc committee, or do you want to do staff and then see what happens there? What's the recommendation?
My recommendation would be to work through staff to begin with, and then at a later date, establish an ad hoc committee and...
And then get the public involved.
And bring the public into it. We have some time to move before the 28th of June, when the first mortars are launched at about 8:05 in the evening, so, we can work on this.
Okay.
It's moving into May now.
Well, as we heard, they moved into last night, so...
So, and actually, that could have been also out in the fields, they have those scaring animals and different things, they have, I forgot, zon guns and things out there, and out in the farming, since I was at the county, I had to deal with the zon gun issue previously, so...
Yeah, you hit the, the, I think that's pretty obvious that it's an order.
Okay. But anyway, we already have a motion, and so we'll go for a second and continue.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor of this current ordinance updates?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, seeing none, unanimous approval on the updates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, moving on to four, another update on the massage parlors.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to begin by introducing a guest, Beverly, if you could come up, Beverly May. Ms. Beverly May is the government liaison for the California Massage Therapy Council. Would you mind coming up here, Ms. May? Ms. May was gracious enough to offer to come here tonight and answer any questions you may have concerning the council or anything else related to massage in California. The purpose tonight of this ordinance revision is to further protect the public, support professionalism within the massage industry, and to follow the state, the intent of state law. The most significant change in this revised ordinance is that it moves the responsibility for licensing and oversight of massage therapists to the state's licensing authority, the California Massage Council, California Massage Therapy Council. The permitting and oversight responsibilities for massage businesses will remain with the police department. As for some background, our ordinance came into existence in 2004. At that time, there was no state oversight of massage within California. The ordinance requires therapists to have 200 hours of training, it requires businesses to be licensed and to abide by health and safety standards and requirements. Both of these licenses are issued on an annual basis, and there are fees associated with both licenses. In 2008, the state enacted the California, or, excuse me, the Massage Therapy Act. Among other things, this act brought into existence the California Massage Therapy Council, whose main mission was to license and oversee massage therapists in California. So at that time, there was really two options for massage practitioners in Yuba City. They could either obtain a city license or go to the Massage Therapy Council and obtain a license through them, the state. The benefit was that this was a two-year license through the Massage Therapy Council and that they could practice anywhere within the state. Locals could not require an additional license. They licensed at two levels, a 250-hour practitioner license and then a 500-hour therapist license. The Massage Therapy Act was then updated two more times, once in 2014 and then once in 2016. One of the things that happened was the abolishment of the practitioner license, so that now there's just a 500-hour therapist license for new licensees. In addition, there was some very clear intent language added to the law, which basically recommended that the state oversee the licensing of massage therapists and that local jurisdictions permit massage businesses and hold them accountable. Additional language was added to make even a stronger recommendation for local governments to establish a permitting program and hold massage businesses accountable for those regulations. We held a public meeting for massage professionals in Yuba City in November to discuss proposed changes to this ordinance. From that meeting, it was learned that there would be a hardship if we immediately required the 500-hour... the 500-hour California massage therapy regulations to be imposed on our local professionals and businesses. So, a option was included in the ordinance to provide a provisional license, which basically means that if a massage therapist would otherwise meet the existing ordinance or the old ordinance standard of 200 hours of training, we could issue them a one-time permit, which would be valid until two years after the new ordinance has been enacted. So, basically gives these people an ability to get up to the next standard, the 500 hours of training, and still work during that time in Yuba City. The fiscal impact for this is, in a worst-case scenario, approximately $3,200 hours, or $3,200 as a one-time expense for staff time to process the provisional licenses. This number comes from the 137 massage permits that have been issued by the Police Department since 2004. I suspect it'll be lower than that, with many of them electing to go through the state immediately. And then, an annual cost to the city of approximately $220 in staff time to license or permit massage businesses. In summary, we believe that this is in the best interest of the public to revise our city's municipal code to follow the intent of state law brought about by the Massage Therapy Act. The recommendation tonight is to introduce an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter III of Title V to the Yuba City Municipal Code regarding massage establishments and massage therapists and waive the first reading. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from council at this time?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
So, my question would be for either one of you, either Commander or Ms. May. Through the California Massage Therapy Council, is there any verification process for the training, training sites, certifications, anything like that, that law enforcement or our jurisdiction would have access to? Or is this still, as in days of old, just kind of, they draw in a certificate and you had to, the Police Department had to go do the research to see if that was a legitimate training facility or some fly-by-night manufacturer of certificates?
No, the California Massage Therapy Council handles all of the vetting of schools. They have the benefit of, you know, the statewide program so that they can see, you know, therapists, they may be going between jurisdictions. They also have the ability to, I think, do a much more effective job at, you know, finding legitimate schools versus, you know, diploma mills, per se, than we could do. I don't know if Beverly wants to add anything to that.
In 2012, CAMTC got authority to approve massage schools. However, we didn't start approving them until this, until last year. Up until then, from 2012, well, from 2011, we began to unapprove schools based on evidence of criminal activity, typically selling fraudulent transcripts. And we have almost 70 schools on that list of schools that we don't accept transcripts from as of July of last year. Well, two years ago, when our law got changed, the legislature made it very clear that they wanted us to actually approve schools as well. And these schools have to be first approved by the California Bureau for Private Post-Secondary Education or be community colleges. And, but they look for different things than we look for. And so, we've just, as of July 1st of last year, we only accept transcripts from schools that we've approved. So it's a pretty robust program.
And I thank you for the, your answer, because that answers a lot of questions that I had. Being involved in the program back in, from about 2005 on, I felt a lot of frustration as we were trying to approve or find. So I probably know about 65 of the 70 schools that are not allowed any longer.
And the reason our first, our initial law had, gave us the ability to, to research, to investigate if we had indication that the person didn't actually had the, have the education, was because of cities telling us about their suspicion of fraudulent schools.
Correct. So, I thank you very much, and that answered my, the questions I had on fiscal impact and everything else for the city. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from council? I will make, oh yeah, absolutely you can.
Do I have to say anything at this?
Absolutely.
Just let me check.
Public needs to hear what you have to say.
My name is Julie Stone, and I have Julie's Massage Therapy and School. We are in the process of shutting the school portion down of our massage establishment. When the hours went to 500 hours, the people in Yuba City, they couldn't afford it. So, we basically, I went a year without doing a class for, to become a massage therapist. We were still doing classes for continuing education so that people can get their hours up. But to become a massage therapist, the 500 hours, people in this area cannot afford it. And I know you guys are saying that you're giving them two extra years, I think it was. But there are some people that have taken classes and, like, my school is, I'm closing my school, so I will not be on the approved list anymore. So anybody that has taken any classes from us, and we've been open since, I think it was 2007, not, yeah, 2007, we've been a school. And anybody that has taken classes from us, even though we were approved through the BPE, we're not on Beverly's approved list for the CAMTC. So, these single moms that are supporting their families, they're going to have to start over from scratch. They have to go back and get 500 hours from scratch. It's not just 250 hours more of education, it's 500 hours. And that's a lot more than $3,200. Our fee at our place was $3,200 for 200 hours, and then that last 50 hours, I let them choose what kind of education they wanted. Like, some people may be into deep tissue, but somebody that's into deep tissue probably isn't into prenatal. So, that last 50 hours, I let them choose. And I know, I mean, we've got, I thought one of them was going to be here because I know she's called and talked to Lieutenant Tappy, but she's devastated because I'm not going to be on the approved list. She supports her family, she's a single mom, and she cannot, she's basically going to be, she won't be able to support her family because she can't afford 500 hours. And the bottom line is, unless something is changed as of January 1st, 2017, Beverly, you can tell me if it has, have they changed the law that states that this is a mandatory law? So, when Arnold made this law into existence, and you can go back through the massage therapy laws, when he made this law into existence, what it said is, this is a voluntary law, it is not a mandatory law.
You need to wrap it up, please.
Okay, we just feel that you guys are making a non-mandatory, or a non-mandatory law, a non-mandatory state law mandatory in the city limits of Yuba City. And I don't understand how you can make a non-mandatory law mandatory in the city limits of Yuba City. That's all I'm saying, and it's not going to help necessarily with your human trafficking either. Because there's, we already talked about those.
Please. So, with that, any comments or other concerns from council on this? Now, I'll make my comments on that. And the human trafficking thing is that brought, brought this forward last year. That was a big issue discussed on the committee, the North SAC Valley Division, League of Cities Board that I'm, are participate in. And in Northern California, there are some areas where massaging, really, massage parlors, a lot of them are fronts to illegal operations and stuff. And as they squeeze those areas, and they are squeezing them hard, mostly the corridor towards I-5, going north into Oregon and some parts of cities in, on 99, it's moving into our area. And we need some way to try to legitimize and actually give legitimacy to the people that do massage. And that was my approach and my thoughts on it. And so I'd asked, found out we were already doing something, but I asked them to, to work on it and found out, at least we were moving. I was at that public meeting, I discussed it at length, and there's a point to where leaders need to make a decision and do some difficult decisions and lead in an area. When, of course, legislation was put into place or the governor did that, they did want to make it mandatory, but the pushback statewide was so hard that it was unable to do that politically. Great accreditation. I wish more of them would work hard to comply with it so that we wouldn't have this discrepancy in, in the different levels. But at this time, I'm going to have to say that I'm in favor of moving forward with this and taking our community professionalism to the next level. I just, I can't, you know, I just personally cannot allow it to continue the way it was.
Can I say something?
We did, we did the two years, we allowed the two years, I actually, I'm the one that recommended the phasing in of two years because I, I felt for the people trying to do that. I mean, it's going to cost them. But anytime a state law or a local law does change or standards change, everybody gets caught in it. I lost all my professional licenses because the state of California made a move back in the 70s. I had four years of training, they wiped out, in a field that I was going to go into. And so, I've had that pain. I know what it's like. I lost it. I had to go back, start the bottom of something else again. So I've lived through that. And it's difficult, but sometimes things happen that way. Yes, you may, yes, you may. You need to go to the podium.
My name's Barbara. I've been a massage therapist here for 18 years. When you say a lot of them are massage parlors that are bad, I disagree.
Not here.
Okay. Any, any place you go, anybody that wants to be dishonest is going to be dishonest. It doesn't matter what name you put on the front of the door, doesn't matter what business you have. Dishonesty is going to be dishonesty. To make all of the honest people to continue to suffer through that is, is not fair. Especially, like she says, you've got people who put all their money out, as much as they could, took all their time to get their license and do it the right way, and now turn around and be told, what you did was just, we're going to wipe it underneath and let somebody else make your decision for you, I think is wrong. I wouldn't want somebody to take mine away after working for 18 years.
Thank you.
Okay.
If there's no more discussion, some action by the council?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
You know, as, you know, as we, as we've heard tonight, I am a little concerned. I started working with Julie Stone way back. You used to call my office weekly, Julie, sometimes daily. And very involved in trying to move forward, legitimate changes in the industry back in, we probably first started talking in 2006, '07, '08, and we had long discussions. I'm a little concerned that a school that was being, you know, offered and provided in our area to help legitimize the industry would be taken or decertified as a legitimate source of training for the hours to date for some of the, of the local massage therapists. So I, I mean, I have a concern with that because the, the school has operated in those days on Gray Avenue, and then, then I think Julie moved it over back behind Stafford. She constantly provided information on non-legitimate operations in town, or suspected operations in town, as they would hear that through the, through the grapevine. So, she's always worked to better the industry. And, and so I'm concerned. And certainly, while I applaud the fact that we have these certified schools, hers would not be a non-legitimate training for the course of hours that one had accumulated. And I would like to see, possibly even have discussion here at the, the diocese tonight, as to allowing these schools that had been previously set up in our area to have some legitimate background. Seems we have access to her records, the training, everything else. We have access to it. She keeps the records of each person that she trained at, at her facility. I know she's shutting the school down, but if she were to maintain those, would we allow those for a course of time to be extended into the, into the future, beyond the dates we're currently talking about?
Through the mayor, if you may?
Yes.
I agree with everything you just said, Councilman Buckland. I also have a concern. You know, we want to be business friendly, and you're having to close down your school, which I think is probably a financial hit to you as well. And, you know, we can overregulate and overregulate, and that's exactly what we're doing, similar to, you know, Second Amendment type issues, where we overregulate, we penalize the good person. My opinion, and what I'm reading and what I've read before this and just reread today, is that it seems that the mindset is, if we regulate and add more hours, that somehow it's going to legitimize the person who's going to do inappropriate behavior behind that curtain. I personally disagree. Unless I can be educated here in a moment, I think adding a few hundred hours, while it's good for someone to learn something, but if these technicians, I believe is the term, the, what's the lower level?
Practitioners.
Practitioners, if they're, if they're effective, they're doing their job, and they're providing a service, or, and the single mother you talked about, I feel for that. And I think maybe perhaps we have a very competent Police Department that can maybe take an enforcement route instead of overregulating something and punishing the people who are otherwise just trying to make a living.
Through the mayor. I, I want to just add on to that. One of the examples, I would hate for those hours to just disappear as if they mean nothing. You know, we go back to our formal education, too. If you have a bachelor's, master's, and you want to continue, doesn't mean we go backwards to have to, we pick up where we've left off and add to. I don't feel that these employees, the schools and so forth, need to go backwards in what they've already accomplished. I think it defeats the purpose. I think if anything, the added hours are to increase their education, increase the knowledge of what they're doing, but to negate everything that they've worked so hard for. It would be like taking my master's away and saying, that means nothing now because state requirements are now changed in order to get that same master's degree today than it was 10 years ago. So I really think that we do need to reevaluate that and be able to provide them a movement forward and not backwards.
From what I remember in our public meeting, that's what the two-year extension was purposed for, to make sure that the more education could be brought on. The problem is, is that you were no longer going to be available and not, you know, certified teacher or, or school. And somehow, I didn't know how you were going to be able to meet that. But it would be up on the responsibility of the practitioners to go back and get the continuing ed- to, um, go back and get the continuing education, get these extra hours.
But you're talking about continuing, continuing education is different than having to start all over from scratch. That's completely different. That's what these people, there's people that are gonna have to start all over from scratch. All I'm asking, if you guys have to change your ordinance, then grandfather the few people in and then start August of two thousand seventeen, say, okay, from now on out, you have to be state, this is where it is, that you have to be five hundred hours and state approved through Beverly and go that direction. But it's not fair to hit, cause it's not just my school. I've got someone that works for me that has six hundred and fifty hours. Her school's no longer on the approval list. Have to start all over from scratch. Six hundred and fifty hours.
I didn't gather that that's what this.
It is.
Eliminated it.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
May I ask for just a point of clarification?
Yes.
The staff report seems to state something. I just want either Commander Tappy or the, uh, representative from the Massage Therapy Council to clarify this. Says the legislation, that state legislation, provided additional guidance with regard to intended enforcement and oversight roles with the C A M T C regulating therapists and local jurisdictions regulating businesses. And this seems to be blurring between the therapists and the businesses. And I just wanna be clear with regard to what will be the role of the state and what will be the role of the city.
Uh, as it is, uh, now, Mr. Craig, uh, the proposal is for the state ultimately, after we get through the provisional possibilities, for the state to have the sole, uh, oversight and licensing authority for the therapists. And then the city will continue through the police department to permit the businesses.
Thank you, Commander Tappy. I don't know if that helps the council in the decision-making process. Uh, Commander Tappy, if, if the council does not designate the state as that representative to, does by default, even though the state has said that's their intent, that they wanna regulate that at the statewide level, would it be retained at the local level for therapists oversight?
Uh, I, as one of the options, we could continue with the existing ordinance, uh, without change. Uh, we could explore also, uh, some kind of a grandfather clause as Ms. Stone had mentioned as an, as an option. Uh, however, the existing ordinance puts all the licensing, uh, in the city's, uh, responsibility, both the business and therapist.
Okay. Well, I will have one more statement here is that I actually did think that the grandfathering would be in there with the intention, having two years to reach the goal. And then at that time, if they did not achieve the goal of the five hundred hours, then then they would have, um, I'm gonna just say repercussions for not getting to the five hundred hours or on that. And that's what I actually had thought that was gonna come forward. And that's kinda what I thought was in here, but.
So, yeah, yes, Ms. May maybe can.
And I think also it is, has something to do with, uh, May's, the school and their oversight.
Well, I just wanna say one clarification. C A M T C does not seek to regulate the entire profession. It is voluntary at the state level. Many, over, I think a hundred and eighty cities and counties have chosen to require it in their city in, in lieu of requiring a city permit, but we don't have a position on whether a city or county should require it. Um, one of the problems here is, is with the closed schools and believe me, I've had major arguments with our attorney as to why we can't accept transcripts from closed schools. Um, her, her position, we know that Julie's school was a reputable school for all the years it was open. We had no problem with that. There were other schools that closed before they had a chance to be approved by C A M T C that we would have unapproved had they not closed. So that's the reason why as of June thirtieth, we no longer accept transcripts from closed schools unless that school had been approved prior to closing. In this case, I know that Julie told me that she was, uh, had been actively encouraging her students to, to certify while, while that lower tier was available and she had been notifying them to, to, um, apply for certification before June, I mean, before December thirtieth, when we could no longer accept the transcripts. But I'm, certainly not everybody followed up on that or, and I'm sure she couldn't reach everybody. So it is true that for those people, that two years, if they had two hundred hours at her school, it, they don't have two, and they never applied to C A M T C, in that's two years, they would need five hundred hours. They don't need the, the additional three hundreds. So there is that burden.
I get frustrated because there's a non.
Beverly is happy they would like to see it a mandatory law right now and there is no, there's no sign of it going.
If you're gonna continue, you need to.
Mr. Mayor, as, what happens unfortunately is, uh, comments from
Right.
the audience aren't captured for the record.
That's what I was gonna say.
And so we want the benefit of having your comments in the record. So, uh, please do approach the podium if you'd like to speak.
And try to wrap it up his comments as quick as possible.
And before she comes up, I just wanna state for the record, I personally and C A M T C do not want the law to be mandatory for many reasons.
Beverly and Lieutenant Tappy have, I mean, they've been, I've, unfortunately, he now has the burden of me talking to him almost every day. Um, but like I said, I'm just frustrated with a non-mandatory law that it seems like Yuba City is trying to make mandatory. And like Barbara was saying, this is not gonna stop human trafficking because you've got four businesses in town right now that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And they're not the ones, it's like the, the legitimate businesses, those aren't the ones that are doing the, the bad things. And the other ones, there's four that I know of that, those are the ones you need to focus on. You need to get the, you need to get the riffraff out. And, and punishing all of us is not going to get the riffraff out because the bad people is just like gun control. You take away the guns, that doesn't mean that you can't, you know, the, the, the bad people, the criminals are still gonna have the guns.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Appreciate, go ahead.
Um, what I'd like to see is if we can move forward with this and, uh, look at grandfathering, um, certain massage prac, practitioners and, and not eliminate those hours that they have worked and see if we can grandfather and move forward from that, whether it be at the end of the two years or whatever. But I think we need to work on a plan that is gonna help them continue to move forward and hold jobs and provide for their families.
And, and just so everyone's clear, the intent of this was not to penalize punitively or anything else like that, the, the business owners who we do absolutely want in this community.
Right.
The legitimate ones. What C A M T C does is they bring a lot of enforcement to us, a lot of extra personnel that helps us enforce the people that are currently there. That's we really wanna get them and, and to help us out. And human trafficking is an issue and that does become one of the jobs where they become entrenched in is a place where they can move around and C A M T C because they have the, the statewide network of tracking people. It makes a benefit for all of us to be able to utilize that. But in getting back to your point, I think it would be a good idea for us to go back, take a look at the, the, um, grandfathering clause and see if there's a possibility, if, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, and I don't know if I can make this comment or not, um, we can go back and take a look at how we grandfather in and if a business that already currently has the two hundred hours, the three hundred hours, the five hundred hours, if we can grandfather them in without worrying about the two hundred hours or whatever Julie had, the five hundred hours, we'd like to take a look at that again and bring it back to you at a later time.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so we can, uh, I guess at this point, I, we can table this one, um, and bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, we can certainly bring this back, uh, at a future meeting in consideration of the comments made.
Absolutely. Okay.
I think we've received the essence of where things are going.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, uh, then, uh, that will be brought back at another time. Uh, with that, uh, public communication, uh, uh, you are welcome to and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment, uh, is taken on items listed on the agenda. When they are called, public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Uh, comments on controversial items may be limited, uh, and, uh, large groups are encouraged to select, uh, representatives to express the opinions of the group. Um, I have requests on specific locations. Are there any, um, twenty-five hours notice? I see, uh, originally we were gonna do Scott then. Are there any others?
There, we've not received any written requests, Mayor.
An appearance of, uh, interested citizens, members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing the general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. So right now, it's basically if you, even if you didn't turn in a card, uh, anything, it's not on the agenda, you may come up and, uh, request to speak about if you so wish. Okay, and that is, uh, David Reed. Looks like it says Yuba Sutter Arts.
Never heard of him.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you again, David.
Members of the council, staff and, uh, members of the public, glad to be here. Just really wanted to take a minute or two to say, uh, thank you to the, to Yuba City for its, I know longstanding support, long before I came on the scene about eight years ago for Yuba Sutter Arts and all that, uh, it's done and it's many, well, since nineteen eighty-one, many, many years in existence. I'm just the current steward of a wonderful organization, so proud to be, uh, involved. So, yeah, I am David Reed, Executive Director of Yuba Sutter Arts, for those of you who don't know me. Uh, I wanna just give you a quick, uh, uh, update right now, a couple of highlights, and then maybe come back in a month or two with a more comprehensive report on what we've, uh, been doing and what we're going to be doing in the, in the year and years ahead. Um, we are continuing, one of our, I think probably proudest moments is, uh, is our ongoing involvement with, um, the Center Performing Arts Association and the rebuilding of the Sutter Theater on Pluma Street. I know that's near and dear to all of our hearts. We've collaborated with the SPA Board for, uh, a long time with our joint fundraising efforts. And in fact, uh, we, Yuba Sutter Arts have now taken over the, um, uh, theater gallery component of that arts center. So we're managing the change out monthly of new artists coming in to display their artworks. And of course, a portion of the sales of that art goes to, um, to benefiting the rebuilding of the theater as well. Another little revenue stream that I think helps, uh, helps ultimately with the, the bigger picture. Yuba Sutter Arts also now manages a number of other satellite galleries, uh, in Yuba City, including your own, uh, city hall offices. We've provided that artwork, we'll continue to rotate that throughout the year. We're also at Justin's Kitchen, we're in Ting's Refuge. Uh, additional, uh, satellite locations will come on site when we have businesses or government offices who, uh, need, uh, kind of a rotating art gallery and we can provide that service. Um, uh, we have our ongoing program with the Playzeum, of course, located here in Yuba City, uh, through our FLIP grant, uh, providing, uh, arts activities and education for those zero to five along with their families. Uh, and right now, last, uh, last of all, but, but far from least, uh, if any of you have seen my repeat emails about this, we're right in the middle of our Poetry Out Loud season, an N E A funded program. I've been running it myself for several years. I still need more Yuba City students involved to come out to our big event on February ninth and recite a poem from memory. Uh, it's our Poetry Pizza Party. So I've been bombarding all of your high school English, drama and art teachers and administrators to try to get, uh, students involved in that. So those of you who are parents, uh, educators or know all of those kinds of folks with, uh, current high school students, please encourage them to come out and join us for a great event, learn a poem, come out and we'll have a little, a little fun with it. Uh, visit us at yubassutterarts.org, Facebook, all the usual things. So my monthly column and the territorial dispatch. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Okay, now with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Um, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff or public request specific items, uh, to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Uh, is there anybody from the public that would wish to have one removed? Uh, anybody from the council?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, I have a question, number twelve.
Okay, so we remove number twelve for separate, uh, discussion. I need a motion for, uh, seven through eleven and then thirteen. So moved. Uh, got a, well, got a first and a second. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, seeing none, it's unanimous vote. Okay, number twelve.
Diana.
You may go ahead.
Um.
Actually, uh, he's gonna do a little presentation for us, just really quick.
It's for number twelve.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and, uh, the city council members, good evening. Uh, on item number twelve of the city's wastewater treatment facility, we treat the, the wastewater from our community. And then we have the two options to discharge the treated effluent that we call. Uh, the one option is to, uh, send it to the, send it to the river. And the second option is to, uh, to send to these, um, to send to the six percolation ponds on the east side of the, um, the main channel. Um, so back in two thousand eleven, some natural changes in, in the, the, some changes in the, in the river bottom occurred and it's covered the, some area right next to our existing outfall that is, that was used to diffuse our treated water into the river all, all over the year. Um, so right now, for most of the year, uh, what, what those changes did, they redirected most of the water when the river flows low, uh, through this deep channel and that left our diffuser structure exposed out. And the state, uh, based on our permit, we cannot discharge into the river, um, whenever diffuser is exposed. And the state requires us a minimum certain depth of water above, above the existing diffuser. It's about eight or nine inches. So, uh, then we are left with only one option to, uh, to dispose our treated water into the, into one of these percolation ponds or all of these percolation ponds. So the percolation ponds, uh, it is, they're limited in capacity and we need to maintain them, uh, from time to time. And they're, since they're in the, in the river flood plan, they are vulnerable for, um, damage during the, the, each time the river floods. And also the state water resources control board, uh, wanted us to move, relocate our diffuser to a different, uh, location where we are, we can discharge our treated effluent year long. So with council approval, back in two thousand thirteen, we, uh, we hired a consultant, uh, environmental science associates to do a study to find alternate, alternative, uh, location for the diffusers. And, and they found five locations within, within this area. Um, and that study was based on, mostly on the stability, the long-term stability. And then, uh, back in two thousand, uh, back last year, city council approved a contract with R M C Water and Environment, and they did alternative analysis study, uh, to look into the study that was done back in two thousand thirteen. And they shortlisted one location to relocate the diffuser. So, but this location is about, um, sixty-two, sixty-hundred three feet away downstream of our existing diffuser. There is a cost associated with that. And there are also several environmental challenges. And, uh, R M C Water and Environment, they recommended to look further into the close proximity into this diffuser, into our existing diffuser area so that we can relocate and minimize the cost impact. So we are estimating at this time that if we are able to find a new location, uh, it may not be as stable as the downstream one, but we may be able to find, uh... we may be able to save about three million dollars for not relocating that far. And, um, so with that, so the staff's recommendation is to move forward with, uh, additional study to find additional, uh, alternative sites to relocate our diffuser.
Any comments from, uh, council member? It's your turn now.
Yes, sir, that was exactly my question when I read here yesterday, um, that the site close to the existing outfall diffuser would be less stable than those identified in two thousand and thirteen, which may save us three million dollars. I just kinda wondered what you mean by less stable? Is that something, uh, the likelihood of that becoming unstable and thereby causing us more than three million bucks later on? Or what, what do you mean by that?
Well, we are, right now, our, we are, um, up against a couple of challenges. One is the stability of the river. Even this location identified ha, is, is, it re, is relatively, has good stability. That does not mean that this location will become, uh, will, I mean, this is not the permanent location. There's no guarantee about it. And the second thing is that our, uh, the permit from the state that allows us to just create and discharge our treated effluent into the river. And there is also potential for that permit to change. And, uh, what that means is that, um, ju, ju, just for an example, if they require us to do additional treatment, like a tertiary level treatment, and at that point, we may be able to recycle one hundred percent of our water, then we may not be, we do not need that quality of water to send to the river. And we can better utilize the water. So, as part of that things, the, the stability is one part of the equation, and saving the money for those potential changes to put it at, to save for our plant expansion at a later date in the future is another part of the equation.
So, stability is referencing the, uh, the depth and location of the river itself in the future?
That is correct, the, the depth and, and the location, yes.
Alright, thank you. To the mayor.
Yes.
So, would this additional study, uh, also look at, with the challenges that we would have on the west side, um, of the river itself and the close proximity to the levee, uh, would they be also looking at the possibility of, uh, bringing the treated, uh, effluent from the ponds into a diffuser? Or, uh, would, is that a possibility where we could utilize something on the, on the east side of the river channel itself?
Well, but, but this study, um, the only thing that we will be looking at is to, a location to install a new diffuser where we can send the treated water from our wastewater facility directly into the diffuser. And then we will, uh, and there's nothing that we will be looking to, um, uh, the line going to the, to the ponds.
So, those are all different waters?
That is correct.
Okay. So, uh, if, for, for purposes of stability, and as we've looked at this, uh, at this area, if they've looked at those five locations, um, and, and they were ranked in, in, uh, viability, what are we going to find that the, that the first study didn't, uh, come up with in that area?
Well, the first study, um, well, the first study, there were two components of the study. Number one is the stability of the river where we can relocate our outfall diffuser, where there is a really less likelihood of the river channel to change. And second part of that study was that if, if there is a location, that location is, uh, appropriate from the permit standpoint of view as far as mixing concerns. Because our permit requires certain type of mixing within, within a specific distance from the diffuser that, that the water that we diffuse in the river completely mixes in it. So, if, if we find a location that is best, uh, is most stable, that does not mean that it, that it is best for the mixing zone. So, the best mixing zone is, is our existing location. If the, if we have the water above our outfall, there are falls downstream, that's the best, uh, location. So, the new study that we will be focusing on will be in the vicinity of the existing diffuser, where we don't have to install a new long line, where we can install a smaller, uh, line, and we can diffuse into the river and get the benefit of, uh, of the mixing, that mixing that is naturally occurring. But, and also, uh, the stability, that then this study will be comparing the stability of the already defined, already found locations and, and, and also the stability, comparing the stability of the newly found location that we are planning on finding a new location through this study.
You know, I, I don't know. Uh, I, I was on the council when, when we lost the, uh, the line across the river, and also the diffuser went, um, high and dry. Those clay banks, um, have changed over time. I mean, they were, they've been known as, as the falls, all these different things. Uh, it's now a massive channel that, that runs down through there. I, I'm only gonna guess, uh, that that's going to change, uh, again. Uh, probably not in the length of time from nineteen sixty-seven to, uh, two thousand and eleven, uh, for the last big changes to occur, but I think that it's, it will probably change, uh, at every high-water event that we have until that clay, um, is, is pushed aside. I'm, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm not an expert in, in hydrology and, and all of that, but I've seen that, that area change, um, significantly in, in the last few years. Um, so, you know, with that, I mean, I, I don't know. Uh, I, I just look at this as if, if that is the best interest of the city, uh, is to put something back in there that could be a short-term fix that we're not looking at, uh, to last for thirty years, uh, forty years, and there's a possibility that the state's going to change the regulations on us, then I think we should minimize the expenditure, um, in that area. Um, so, I, I guess you've answered, uh, the majority of my questions, and I'm still a little, a little puzzled by why we would be going back up against those clay banks again, but, uh, I think you've answered the majority of them.
I'll address it, uh, then at this time. Okay, you go ahead.
To the mayor. Mandy, is, uh, are we just gonna, is, the idea is, are we gonna hook up to the existing and just extend it out? Or is it gonna be a hookup to a certain area and then continue on? What, what's the idea that we're gonna have here?
Well, the idea is right now, um, to hook into the existing line right here.
Okay.
And extend it upstream or downstream.
Okay.
Depending on whatever the s- stable location that we find.
Okay, thank you. Let's do council there, that's, through my knowledge of being down there for a while, that, that we're very cost, cost-effective, so that, that is a good thing. Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you very much. Um, Mandy, um, there is a resource perhaps for some of this study of what is, um, underneath there, the types of clays that are there. Uh, the, people sometimes don't know this, but there are different types of clays that do not wash away well because they're literally the gooziest clay you can get, and they're very stable, and then there's ones that have, uh, sands in them and stuff like that. It's a little larger particles. Um, I was on the Lower Feather River Corridor Management Plan with DWR, was legislated, and, um, in the middle, near the end of that plan is when this blew out, and we had to go back for another year and re-study that area. They had people underwater looking at, you know, different things, uh, for the stability of it. And what happened there, they said, is that there was an underwashing that actually, they thought it was gonna stick around for quite a few more years there at the falls, but they didn't know at the time was that underneath there was a, um, had it been a deepening hole, and that's why it blew out, because the foundation of it went and it collapsed into it. Um, and, and that's because of the different mixes of clay. And, and they came up with that it is actually a very stable, uh, clay bank across there. You can look at it, the geomorphic, uh, stability of it is there. Um, but that was, uh, turned out to be the weakest point for that. Um, and, and so that study may give more information to you when, make sure that the, whoever's gonna be doing this goes to DWR and asks for that study and, uh, the data that they have from that, if they can, uh, utilize it. And, and actually, that clay area there is quite stable, um, geomorphically and, and just the materials. Um, and I would say it would probably be more than thirty years before there'd be any significant movement through there, um, of, of any of the clays. It'd be more than thirty years, and by then, we know we're gonna end up having a, uh, tertiary treat and some other kind of recycling and stuff by that time. Um, so, I would, I would like to definitely look at the, um, moving forward with this study to identify that. Um, and confirm just, you know, our suspicions and hopes that it would be the right location to do it.
To the mayor.
Yes.
Um, in the room is, uh, Mr. George Massalem, who was our Public Works Director at the time that we punched the new, uh, replacement line across the Feather River. Um, and, and as I best know, and George can correct me if I'm wrong, um, but from water, the top of the water level to where that pipe, uh, goes under the river was punched down about eighty feet. Am I correct, George?
No, the depth of the pipe.
So, we have, the depth of the pipe itself went sub, um, somewhere between fifty and eighty feet. Under the channel. And the purpose for that, I believe, was, um, long-term stability of that, of that pipe because of re-channelization of the water and everything else through that area. So, that's why, that's why I just wanna let the public know, the reason I, my question, the stability of, of that area is from our previous work that we've done, and that's why my questions were more specific, uh, to the, to the clay banks themselves and stability of those. And, uh, the preparation that has been made by this city at a cost of millions of dollars is to replace a pipe that was put in, um, at a very shallow depth that we lost and faced fines on, but yet we put it in a more stable location, um, in a deeper part of the, of their, uh, river at near that same location, so. That's, that's why I, I had those questions for you and just that clarification.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? And I, I just had information on that, that I wanted to make sure that staff knew was available.
Absolutely.
In studies.
Yeah.
So, um, looking for, um...
I'll make a motion.
Action, okay. Okay, a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Okay, you got more work to do. Thank you. Unanimous vote. Thirteen, MHM, for the Bridge Street Widening Project.
Mayor?
Diana, yes.
That was part of the consent calendar, so you're on fourteen.
Oh, that's right, sorry. So, um, that's already part of it, that's right, moving on to general items. Um, Fifth Street Replacement Project, presented by Kevin Bradford, extraordinaire, senior engineer that's been working on this with a passion and done a fantastic job over the years.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, members of the council. I'm Kevin Bradford, Senior Engineer with the Public Works Department. Item, uh, fourteen on the agenda, um, tonight is a recommendation that council adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project and also authorizing advertisement for bids on the project upon approval from Caltrans. So, the plans and specifications are, are completed, and they, uh, and fully incorporate, um, all of the, the concepts that you've seen on this figure over the, uh, past many years of, uh, uh, public, uh, meetings and the most recent, uh, Bridge Street Corridor Celebration. Um, just to highlight a few of those, uh, we've got four lanes of traffic across the river between Yuba City and Marysville. Um, we have a new on-ramp from Sutter Street onto westbound Bridge Street. We've got a new, uh, traffic signal right here at that on-ramp, as well as the off-ramp from the bridge. We've got a new, uh, traffic signal here at the intersection of Bridge and Second Street. And over here in Marysville, we have an added lane, um, for through traffic and moving the existing, uh, free right turn a little further to the south to make that movement, uh, more efficient. Um, we're also here widening the Second Street Undercrossing, which will allow traffic to slow down, uh, sooner, uh, or at least to get out of the way of the through traffic as they are slowing down to take the off-ramp. Um, so, those are some of the key highlights of, uh, the project. We have a couple of renderings here. Um, one is an overlook on the, uh, at the, uh, river crossing. This would be a little, uh, bulbout in the, in the class-one bike trail where people could, uh, get out of the way of, of pedestrians or bikes and overlook the river. That's approximately one-third of the way across the, uh, the, the span, and there'll be another one, um, two-thirds of the way across, kinda over the soccer fields. Uh, it's basically showing right in there. Uh, let's see, we've got another one here. This is the Second Street Undercrossing, looking south. We, uh, just to point out, we did take out the traffic signal that will be right here just to show and highlight, um, some of the, the decorative street lighting and some of the architectural features on the, on the faces of the wing walls. So, uh, the anticipated schedule for the project, pending council's action tonight. Uh, I wanna point out, this is a change from the staff report. Uh, we, we expect Caltrans approval, uh, to a, advertise in March of two thousand and seventeen. Um, that would allow us to put the project out to bid April and May and award a contract either at the end of, uh, May or perhaps at the regular meeting in June. Um, we'd start construction in July and still on track to hopefully complete things, uh, December two thousand and nineteen. Fiscal impacts, uh, it's an estimated sixty-six and a half million dollar total project construction cost. That's inclusive of, um, construction management and inspection costs. That also includes contingency for unforeseen, um, geotechnical issues or such that could come up. Um, of, of that, uh, sixty-six and a half million dollar cost, the funding is, um, almost all federal funding. It is, uh, forty-six point two million from the Highway Bridge Program. It is seventeen point four million from the Regional Surface Transportation Program. That used to be STIP money, but, um, SA-COG last December, um, basically reprogrammed the Regional Surface Transportation Program and took us, uh, funding to the project and took us out of the STIP program, which is a huge benefit to the timeline of the project. We also have, uh, two point three million dollars left over in a federal earmark that was, uh, that was allocated to the Su- Sutter County back in two thousand and four, um, that have been repurposed for the project, and then we've got a minor, uh, relatively minor six hundred thousand for, uh, water relocation, water utility relocations. And, um, th- this is our estimate. We will bring back, uh, actual fiscal impacts after the bids have been opened when we ask, uh, your council to award a construction project. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions?
Any questions for Kevin?
No questions, but, uh, my comments, uh, to you, Kevin, are thank you for your diligent, uh, and consistent work to bring this project forward. Um, it's been, uh, a pleasure, um, over the years to build the, to move this, though it's been delayed, um, just incrementally. Um, your work and, uh, everything that you had prepared on this, along with other staff here at Yuba City, uh, and your, your work with SA-COG certainly moved, uh, this project to where we are at today. And it's a proud moment, uh, to be able to say that, that we can replace a, a bridge that, uh... And it's a proud moment to be able to say that we can replace a bridge that no longer fits the needs of our community. It is seen as a regional component. The, we gained consensus down at Secog regionally that this was a highly important project. And staff at Secog certainly commends you for the work that you've done on this project in keeping it on the front burner and making sure that we could move forward at this time. So I just wanna say thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Kevin there?
If there's none, I wanna take, I mean, I wanna move staff's recommendation.
You've been there so long, you needed to go for it.
Second that.
And again, thank you, Kevin, for zigging and zagging as this project has definitely gone through a lot of funding changes and options and stuff, so. And with that, got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous vote, let's get her done.
And just so you know, the newspaper certified this is dead until 2019, and this isn't back at the Appeal Democrat. This is just, don't give up local hope when the locals are working on a viable project like this. Again, a lot of really hard work by staff here.
Thank you. Okay. Arnaldo, again.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Arnaldo Rodriguez, Development Services Director, the city of Yuba City. The item before you can this evening is a continuation of the item that was originally discussed before the city council at the special meeting on December the thirteenth of last year. This project itself was initially proposed to the planning commission as a request to establish a biohazardous waste transfer facility here in Yuba City in an approximately forty-five hundred square foot building. Subsequent to the planning commission's approval, staff did receive an appeal of the planning commission's decision, and that's how we ended up before the city council. Typically, most use permits do not make their way before city council because in our municipal code, it stipulates that the planning commission generally approves the use permits. This proposal, again, it's a biohazardous waste transfer facility. It is not a treatment facility, and the applicant has no intention of proposing to try to attempt to operate a treatment facility. So once the material is collected from throughout the Yuba City area, the material itself is actually brought on site. It's actually not handled by the technicians, rather the containers that the material is actually picked up from, from a generator. Generators commonly include vets, clinics, dental offices, and medical offices. It's actually picked up by the technician. It's then transferred, or it's then taken to this transfer facility. On a weekly basis, the material itself is picked back up, placed in a box truck, and then it's taken down to Fresno where it's actually treated at a relatively large treatment facility. The site itself, simply for the benefit of the council and for members of the audience, it's located on the southeast corner of Industrial Drive, an industrial drive. Industrial Drive is a loop road. It's a relatively nondescript parcel, as is the building. At the December meeting, the city council directed staff to come back to the council and gave staff three directives. The first directive, which was to have staff prepare a resolution to deny the appeal to overturn the planning commission's action. The second item was to prepare findings pursuant to Section eight dash five seven zero zero three D of the Yuba City Municipal Code and to draft amended conditions of project approval based on feedback that the city council received. Attachment number one of your staff report outlines the required findings by the municipal code, the roughly three pages in length. Attachment number two of your city council report provides twelve new conditions. These conditions were originally, they again were not in the initial package to the city council back on December the thirteenth, however, staff did add those conditions at the request of the city council. There are, just to quickly summarize, the twelve conditions. Condition number eight states that all loading and unloading shall occur inside, and again, I'm simply paraphrasing. The conditions are a little bit longer than what I'm gonna read. Condition number thirteen is hold harmless agreement, also known as a, it's legal jargon to have the applicant hold the city harmless should there be any potential litigation. Condition number sixteen, that the applicant shall provide a burglar alarm system. Condition seventeen, the applicant shall provide a video surveillance system. Both condition number sixteen and condition number seventeen would be subject to the review of the Yuba City Police Department. Condition number twenty, that there be no public drop-off at the facility itself. And then condition number twenty-four, that a new fire suppression system would be installed, and that fire suppression system is subject to review by both the building department and the fire department. And then also staff prepared attachment number three, which again was a resolution to deny the appeal of holding the planning commission's approval of the use permit subject to compliance to the amended conditions of approval as outlined in your staff report. So with that being said, staff recommends that the city council confirm the planning commission's approval, thereby denying the appeal to deny the project.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from council members for Arnaldo at this time? Seeing none, are there any public that wish to make comment? I see that there were no cards turned in, but just say your name and you will have three minutes.
My name is Ruben Soldana, property owner at thirty-eighty-one Industrial Drive. We've been out there approximately twenty-seven years. And at the last meeting, at the last council meeting, I think the mayor said that when he was out there on Industrial Drive, the traffic was ten times as worse.
No, during the construction, I don't know if I said ten times, but it was...
Ten times, yeah. Anyway, I don't know what day you were out there. What year were you out there?
In the nineties and the two thousands when there was a lot of construction going on at the time.
Yeah.
There was a lot of traffic going on at that time.
There's a lot of traffic now, especially with the high school now. The high school's been there ten years. I'm sure Mr. Harris can say something about that if he wishes, but, you know, and there's a lot of truck... I'm sorry?
I don't know what you mean by high school.
By, the high school, it's been there ten years. Here where they have, is River Valley has, it's been there approximately ten years. Traffic during the school and the events is pretty bad. And there are at least four large trucking companies out there in that area. And George Watcherton Avenue is a connector route to Highway one thirteen. People going to and from, Sac, Woodland Bay Area.
Yes.
So, and these buildings, they're all in the county at one time. They were built probably in the mid-seventies, something like that. They're wood-framed with flat roofs. Weather and age has taken its toll on these wood structures. And the building codes in the county back then were pretty lax. You know, they didn't have any fire suppression systems. There's no seismic strapping, hold downs, et cetera, nothing like that. They're right on the ground. So, you know, and I can speak firsthand, and we had a fire out there in oh-six. It was a total loss, including the contents and including the fire extinguishers. The efforts of the Yuba City Fire Department saved any neighboring structures, many neighboring structures. We have since rebuilt under the city codes and compliances. We're required to install fire sprinklers and be ADA compliant Title twenty-four, et cetera. Sprinklers would have saved my old building and at least confined or minimized the damage. Eco-compliant was asked twice to hold a meeting with the occupants of Industrial Drive. This was brought to my attention later. This was recommended by the city, by Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Cook. They obviously failed to do that. They chose not to listen to the city. We just don't appreciate the idea that one business can so radically change the dynamics of a neighborhood and workplace without the need of the neighborhood approval.
Okay, thank you.
So that's just the public, you know, we're speaking, and I just hope the council listens. So thank you.
Okay, introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, again, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Joe Leon. I am born and raised in Yuba City, went to school here. I actually worked on Industrial Drive for fifteen years, from nineteen ninety to two thousand and five. I'm also one of the original fifteen plaintiffs that has to do with water contamination out there. My history out there is quite familiar with everybody in the neighborhood and in the businesses that have come and gone in the time since then. And I can certainly tell you that we've dealt with a lot when it comes to birth defects, death, and very serious things of that nature that has to do with toxic substances. And what this business is, and what I pointed out before, was that the applicant was being untruthful, and they are dealing in toxic substances. I saw something that's on the amended stipulations here, that they're not gonna be doing body parts or anything like that. So if this use permit is granted, the same state filings that I'm gonna pull that shows that they do deal in these items, we'll have to review them next year because every July they have to file those. Now, the high school that he's talking about is Faith Christian High School. The SEQA that was filed on this didn't mention anything. It said there were no schools in a quarter-mile radius, but that's wrong. Faith Christian, as the crow flies, is the high school that is there. And that also doesn't take into account the daycare facilities or the places of worship that reside four hundred meters, and I think another one was a few hundred meters beyond that. We came here, and this is also, if you look in today's Appeal Democrat, this is the biggest thing on the local news right here, and it kinda downplays the fact that we turned in nearly seventy signatures to you last month. Forty-four signatures just from people on Industrial Drive and the houses immediately around that, and twenty-three signatures from people that we passed out and put things on their door in that neighborhood. So this wasn't all Yuba City, this was just our neighborhood over there. So we had seventy people. You also had a presentation by Arnaldo where he said we received a significant, he received several letters and emails from people out there in opposition to this project. Not a single one of those was submitted to you, not one. I've called the city, I've emailed Arnaldo, and asked, why aren't those being presented to you? Because when we put this information out to the people in that area to let them know what was being proposed here, they voiced their concern. Not everybody can be here and talk. And they voiced their concern through letters and emails, and you guys didn't receive a single one of them. Not a single one of them is in any of the public records that's posted online for December thirteenth, nor for tonight's meeting. And I don't think it's fair that, you may have had twenty, thirty people. I know we talked to about fifty residences and people over there. I mean, seventy, we had seventy people that we talked to. And more of those were gonna talk to their other family members and send you guys emails and letters. And to my knowledge in the public record, none of those have been received by any of you, and none of that's being considered.
You're gonna have to wrap this up since you didn't call in and or say anything about...
I did, I did call in on Friday, and I was told that I would get five minutes, but I was just told right now that...
I'm continuing it.
Okay, yes, sir.
So you got about another minute and a half.
Yes, sir, thank you. On the resolution right here for the city council, there's things that are wrong. It says, we're asked, the environmental assessment was not included in the appeal. Well, that's wrong because we did talk about the schools and how they are in the quarter-mile radius of that, and that was one of the things that's on the condition for the SEQA thing. And you gotta ask yourself, like, why here? Well, with the transfer stations, we have one here. It's Stericycle, the largest one in the nation. And I told you before, there's a gigantic movement in communities all around because they don't want that. Stericycle, they're here. So there's not like there's a need and we don't need this. And it comes presented to the commission and to the council as red bag waste, and they gloss over things. And you talk about needles and stuff like that, and you gloss over the fact that what's really going on. And unbeknownst to the council, and I had to pull these from the Mrs. Dabney that was here last month from the Medical Waste Management Program, I pulled these state filings, and it showed last year and this year, and it showed almost ten times increase on the amount of human tissue. Now, we won't find out about this again, how much they're gonna do in the next year until next July. But you gotta remember, when you look in the application, that's just a few hundred pounds of that type of tissue waste, just with them, with one truck. I didn't bring that, but it's just one vehicle. And what they are proposing to do is...
You're gonna have to wrap it up.
Absolutely. What they're proposing to do is to be a hub. And if you look right there, this is the basis of the appeal right there. And again, this right here is incomplete. When it's talking about the amendments to the agenda and it's saying, when it's summarizing that, it only says half of that. When it says Part E, "The project will not be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity." I can talk, but I gotta make this really quick. Well, that's only half of it, and I don't know why it wasn't put out there in full. Or be detrimental or injurious to property in the neighborhood. Now, we've tried to sell our property. We're getting out of our business, and we have a property right there we're trying to sell. We've already had an interested buyer back out of the deal pending what's happening with this. And if they move in here, we already have a history with toxic waste. It's gonna paint our neighborhood as a dumping ground, and it's gonna continue to make our property values go less and less. And that's certainly alone right there injurious or detrimental to our property. That's part of Part E.
You're gonna have to...
Okay, I'll fix it right now. So I think the reason why they want to be here in Yuba City is because there's only a transfer station, the one from Stericycle. And this place right here, who has never done this before, the closest one is in Lake County, so there's a big gap of where transfer stations are. And if you look in their original application, they plan to be a hub. So they're going to increase traffic because just like they collect waste from all over the Bay Area and they take it halfway across the state to Fresno, or they take it to Hayward, they're traveling halfway through the state. So to say that this stuff is just only gonna be from our community is wrong. This stuff is gonna come anywhere in that bubble, from Lake County, Eureka, Fortuna, those are the nearest ones, and then Sacramento. This whole big area right here from Nevada and all that right there, and that's why they're here, because they see an opportunity.
Please stop.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time, and, you know, there's so much to say, but I appreciate you guys considering this. And, you know, the people, the business owners have spoken, and I hope you give some consideration to all of the citizens here. And somebody needs to speak out.
Yes, I understand.
Because they say this stuff is safe. And I lost a brother. And forty years ago, somebody would've spoke out. And said, this isn't safe, maybe he'd be here.
Okay, thank you. This is kind of a historical thing out there, and a lot of us do know some of the history of what occurred with Taylor and Dow and stuff like that to the water, the water table and the contamination there. So we are cognizant of that. So we wish that that had not happened and had to deal with it. With that, we'll move on and ask for comments, questions? Through the mayor?
Go ahead.
Arnaldo, the changes that we made from last month, Eco-compliance is satisfactory with them, happy with them, they will take care of it? The issues that you've given us that we discussed, that's no problem?
Yes, through the mayor.
Yes.
I spoke with Eco-compliance, I met with Eco-compliance last Thursday, and they are, they're in agreement, come with all the conditions that stipulated... in agreement come with all the conditions that stipulated in the staff report, um, including the twelve new, um, conditions. Thank you, Arnaldo.
Any comment?
Through the mayor, just.
Absolutely.
Just a comment. Um, why bring competition into town, uh, for Stericycle? State regulations as they increase, uh, require the handling of, um, medical waste products from the various locations. Those requirements become more and more stringent, um, over time. The way it was handled thirty years ago, the medical waste was handled, um, was simply either to go to landfill. Or it was never processed, or it went into an incinerator. And in our case, uh, went over to Fremont Hospital for this town to be burned in the middle of a, of a neighborhood. To my knowledge, there was no catalytic system on that burner, uh, over there. And so as we go through, uh, again, more and more state regulations, um, more quality control over these products and certainly less exposure, uh, to the public. You'll see and, and will probably see, um, competition come along because not one handler uh, necessarily would build it to, uh, provide the best price, uh, for all of the, the various locations. Stericycle is located a matter of a couple hundred feet from here. In the middle of a, um, one of our commercial business areas. And I have checked with a number of the businesses in there to ask them, have you been affected by this? Various businesses, uh, whether they be CPAs, whether they be, uh, state employees, uh, whether they simply have a restaurant, uh, a matter of a few feet away. And the answer overwhelmingly in my checking was not to one degree did we even know that they were there or that we were being affected by anything negative. They have a higher license. They're actually a processor. They, uh, do very little processing on site. Um, it is basically, uh, small, uh, processing that they do at that location. But yet we have it just here within, again, within just feet of us. The location, you're not going to put one of these things out in the middle of, uh, the hinterlands or on top of the buttes or some other place, uh, where it's not going to have some effect or some perceived effect, um, on the community. The, uh, conditions that were talked about, uh, by council, uh, seem to meet a higher threshold uh, than what even the Stericycle, uh, location is required to have. So, uh, with that, I'm confident, uh, that this will not have a negative impact on businesses. It's not going to have a negative impact on health and certainly, uh, does not expose the public to any greater degree of hazard, uh, than any of the existing buildings or businesses that are currently out there.
Any other comment? Comments from any other member of council? Well, um, I want to thank Arnaldo and his staff for working so hard to address, um, every single one of the concerns that was brought out in the public meeting last time. Uh, specifically the number ten here also where no human organs or limbs or, you know, remains would be processed or, uh, go through there. Uh, the only thing that I know for sure that does go into those types of, uh, situations are when they remove something that's on your skin. That goes into a towel situation and, and that's the extent of that type of thing that, um, would be allowed by the state of California to go there. Um, in our location, we actually have, as, uh, Councilman Buckland has said, we are putting a much higher level of, uh, responsibility and accountability on them than, um, is necessary for even the higher level license. Uh, we are, we're taking them above and beyond that, uh, to address all of the concerns that the community had out there. Um, and, and we do sympathize with the fact that, uh, the water table was, um, contaminated and now you don't have the wells you had to connect, uh, to water syst, our water system. The building standards, uh, it's, it's addressed in here that they would be conditions that they would have to, um, uh, upgrade that specifically that wall and any ones that they need to, um, bring up to building codes. Uh, it also has been recommended that, in fact, they plan on removing all the sheet rock and replacing it for the purpose of, uh, having a better firewall that would be in there for fire purposes. Also, the fire suppression system technically is not required there. But we're saying, you need to have it. We're telling them that. And, and I am actually a little dismayed that, um, somebody would basically slander a business, uh, a little disappointed, uh, in basically telling them, uh, basically that they're liars. Um, that's a little, uh, strong way to say it, but, um, with all the effort that they've gone through and they, and the constraints that we are putting on them to continually say that they're gonna break that. Um, there is no way that's that runs into an account here. So I, I just, it, it a little bit dismays me that after all that work that's been done to make sure that they are overregulated for our health and safety to comply with. Uh, with that, uh, any more questions or comments from council? If not, I, uh, ask for some action?
Through the mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion to move forward, um, to, what was it?
Number fifteen.
Mine went off.
I know. It was like, okay, we are, um.
Forgot to tap it.
Make the confirmation to go ahead and, um, deny the appeal.
And then of course, we do have the, uh, corrected attachments that are in there.
Amended conditions of approval for the use permit.
Okay, I have a first and I do have a second?
All second time.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Say no. Okay, um, so was that a unanimous vote? I?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the, uh, I gotta get mine up again.
I won't forget about this. I will make sure about that. I own all of you guys' reputations.
There we go.
Mayor, um, can, just point of order if it's okay.
Yes.
I think the actual action would be to, to, uh, to deny the appeal of holding the planning commission's decision uh, with, subject to approval of the conditions of approval and also making the findings as, uh, as stipulated in the staff report.
There you go.
There it is.
Okay, thank you.
I was trying to find that, but it was gone from my, it was gone from my computer.
Disappearing.
It, it went off on me and so, and it wasn't on this other one here. Okay, um, moving on to sixteen. State revolving fund grant loan application for water meter replacement project.
Mr. Mayor and the council members. So this item is to get the council's authorization to get, um, adopt adoptions as recommended in the staff report, to file an application for, for the grant funding from the state waters, resources control board. And the state water board offers grant funding for the water meter replacement project. And in order to qualify for this type of grant funding, the meters must be equipped with automatic reading system that is a cellular, uh, meeting, meter reading system to qualify for this type of grant. So in the background, the city's distribution system has approximately nineteen thousand meters and all of those meters are radio read meters. And approximately sixteen out of nineteen thousand meters are over ten years old and they need replacement of their heads. And approximately three thousand meters are approximately seven years old and they need the replacement of the heads in about two to three years. And based on the, uh, recent testing of the meters throughout the city, approximately two thousand meters need complete replacement within a year. So we have, uh, two main options to handle this project for water meter replacement, replacement of the heads. Number one is to replace the meter heads and the meters with the in-kind radio read meters and all the heads. And the second option is to replace the meter heads of seventeen thousand meters with the, uh, cellular base meters. And, um, and then replace the complete meters with the, um, with the cellular read meters. So option two is only eligible for grant funding. And our adopted budget, the CAP budget identified funding for this water meter replacement project. So does a recent rate study in, in the water, um, the water rate study that was completed last year. So the cost analysis of this project. If we, um, if we go with option one, that is to replace the meter heads with the in-kind meter heads. The total cost is approximately, that includes equipment and installation, all the, uh, everything, about four point eight million. Uh, however, that does not, uh, provide any type of grant funding. So the city's share in that option is four point eight million. The second option is to go with the cellular meter technology and it is eligible for grant funding. The cost is, total cost is approximately eight million dollars. And, uh, but the city's share with the grant funding is four million dollars if, if our grant gets approved. So, uh, so based on these numbers, option two saves approximately one point three million dollars over next ten years. Uh, they have about eight hundred thousand dollars pro, from construction cost savings and about five hundred thousand dollars on the labor savings from meter readings that we don't have to read the meters. And, and then the remaining four million dollar city's share will come from the low interest loans from the state. And the debt service of the, uh, loan, uh, will not create any additional, uh, effect on our, uh, current water rates. They have already programmed in our CAP budget and, and the recent rate study. To look on the benefits of the, um, of the cellular read meters, they provide, uh, better customer service to the customers. They can download their apps and they can look on the real time data of their water uses anytime, anywhere in the world. And it also provides automatic data transfer ability for billing purposes for the city. And it also provides fast leak detections. And we can look at where the water leaks are at and we can, through all of these efforts, we will be able to conserve water and energy. And that's why the main reason the, the state is providing grant for these automatic read meters. And ultimately, if, if we save water and energy, that will help to save water, the, the cost on the entire water, uh, of water rates in the long run. And it also provides community engagement in the water conservation efforts. So this is how the, how the meter looks like. This is the meter, meter head and, and this is the cell, the transmitter. Just the basics of how the meter operates. The meter gets the data and it transfers the data over through the cellular, uh, network over to the, um, to the cloud-based system and to the utility, utility billing system and also the customers. And, and this, uh, the cost estimate that we have included in these options also includes all the services through the cellular, uh, data and everything for the next ten years. So these are the examples of the, the customers, how they will be able to see the data on their computers, their, uh, their tablets and their cell phones. And this will also give us the city ability to look on the customized, our, uh, dashboards to look at the water uses from the different, uh, neighborhoods, uh, from the customers and, and try to analyze and, and conserve. And with that, uh, I would like to make a recommendation that adopt the recommended adoptions for the state water, um, fund financial assistance application. And when the, uh, when the, uh, state, um, approves our application, the staff will return back to the council for additional, uh, recommendations. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council, comments? I do have one since, um, there isn't any from the rest. Um, so this will definitely help with leak detection, um, much quicker if something happens in a home. Uh, and then there'll be an alert, you know, is there gonna be any way that all of a sudden, like a pipe breaks in a home and, and our staff will be able to see? Or there'll be an alarm or an alert that we could at least do some checking and say, hey, you know, something happened, um, and you noticed that? Cause an open line can put out a lot of water inside of a home. I have a friend that it went on while he was on vacation for three weeks and it completely destroyed their home. So that's, uh, you know, interesting situation for them, but, and then also for a neighborhood, we would see that maybe there's, um, extra, maybe there's our, our system that we are responsible for. Um, there isn't high use in that area. Um, that we, is there any way we could do something of that nature too with this?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. This will help in the leak detection mu- much faster. And, uh, in order to give us the alert, uh, of any irregular water uses from the nineteen thousand customers. I'm not sure, but there may be some ways to get the alert. But if there's some alerts, then, uh, this, this system, the first, at first hand, this system put the customers responsible that they can download the app and they can monitor their own uses.
Right.
And, and I'm not sure that if, uh, uh, this system provides the ability, probably it does to the city staff to monitor all the nineteen thousand connections and give the alerts.
Well, it goes through a computer system. If there's, you know, with that, programs can be set up in a way very easily to perhaps for this, maybe it isn't set up that way, but, um, that'd be a recommendation to at least look into.
Absolutely. So I'll be looking to that.
Yes.
Through the mayor. Uh, so one of the comments you made is, is that this structure, um, in how we would obtain, uh, the cellular, um, component to this and everything would not, uh, increase the water rate through the, the CIP that, that we have in place, wouldn't, uh, increase it any pursuant to, to eighteen. What I want to be certain of, um, is that we have a rate structure below what the, what the allowances are under the rates we set in two eighteen. The council has adopted, adopted a lower rate. Is that rate going to be affected?
Well, our, uh, existing, our existing adopted CAP budget, uh, in, in our existing adopted CAP. our existing adopted CAP budget, in our existing adopted CAP budget, we have certain set aside funds to fund the replacement of these meters or the meter heads. And exactly that money will go towards paying the debt service. So so at the bottom line, it will not affect our, the rates, the water rates.
The currently established rates.
That is correct.
Here comes Diana now.
So if I understand your question correctly, so through the proposition two eighteen process, maximum rates were approved.
Correct.
This last year, council approved rates below that threshold. And so would these, would this project increase those rates? There are other factors that are going to go into whether or not those rates increases next year, part of that being water conservation. So even though our current mandate from the state is fifteen percent, our customers have actually conserved more than that over the summer months as well as the winter months. So this project, through the that rate structure, we had identified about a million dollars annually to go towards meter replacement, pipeline replacement, repair, and then also coating of the tanks. So, you know, as Robin comes forward in the next couple of months with updates on where we are with the revenues, that's really what's going to dictate whether or not those rates are increased in, proposed to be increased in May, when we come back to you with our recommendation.
Yeah, so I guess more specifically, this, my question is, this project in and of itself will not increase a demand on the current rate structure.
Correct.
Thank you.
With that, any more comments?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Harris has a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous approval of that. And thank you for looking for the alternatives that are even more efficient and actually twenty-first century type approach. That's that's great to see that staff is really working hard for that.
Thank you.
Ah, the anticipated T-bid process.
I see it's very anticipated, they're all leaving.
Well, for us.
Maybe it's me. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This is the second item this evening that I would say is, as Joe Biden might say, it's a really big deal, right? One was a long project for multiple years on a bridge.
Well, did he just say Joe Biden? Give him, give him his credit in the last two days, okay.
Said a little differently than that. He did say it a little bit differently, but it is a big deal. So I've been at the city for almost eight years. And since starting at the city and actually pre-working at the city, I participated on the city's first economic development work plan group. And one of the issues that was brought up was tourism. Since that time, the your Economic Development Commission has identified the need to provide a dedicated source of funding to provide some type of effort to truly market Yuba City and the Yuba Sutter region for tourism efforts. So over the last four years, the city has actually provided two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You, the city council has made an investment in our Chamber of Commerce. That money, the one specific goal that staff has has pushed the chamber with is ensuring at the end of this funding that there's a dedicated source of funding for tourism, a tourism improvement district. Included since that time, the city has actually entered into a lease down agreement with the chamber for the Madden House. And this past year, we provided fifty-four thousand dollars, fifty-three thousand and three hundred dollars to be exact, for a contract for Civitas to create a tourism management district, once there was some some support from hotels in Yuba City and and the region. So let's talk a little bit about a tourism improvement district and what it is. As I mentioned, it is a stable force, a source of funding for destination marketing. This is a project similar to the Fifth Street Bridge that's been led by the city of Yuba City. Although the chamber has received some funding from other jurisdictions, by by far, the lion's share of funds have come from the city of Yuba City for a regional effort. On average, after tourism improvement districts are established, they see a hundred and eighty percent increase in tourism spending. Currently, there are a hundred and fifty-seven a similar type of districts. They might be called a T-bid, they might be called a TID, a TMD. There's a variety of different acronyms and names across the state, but there is a hundred and fifty-seven and they have a median budget of seven hundred and fifty thousand. And this, this is an assessment, it is not a tax. So the assessment is conferring a special benefit upon the businesses in the district and are not just taxes for the general benefit of the jurisdictions. For example, there's currently a ten percent TOT. That is a general tax that goes to the city's general fund. So what else will the TID do? Well, one, it'll it'll raise the profile of our of our city and of our region. It'll increase tourism and and truly enhance an economic development effort. And it 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 enables this public investment into into tourism. So how does it work? First, the hotel pays an assessment that they charge on their customers. Right now, on average, in the state of California, it's somewhere between thirteen and fourteen percent of what one would pay at a hotel when you stay in a community. It could be as high as seventeen and as low as about ten percent. And they can be a variety of mechanisms from TOT assessments and other sorts of financing mechanisms. That that money, that hotel is paid, the way that it occurs is the hotel collects the two percent on a quarterly basis, as we do with our current TOT. They receive a notice from the city, they fill it out, and each jurisdiction separately will collect the funds from the from the hotels within in their jurisdictions. And then if the council approves tonight and and this moves forward and all the hotels, we don't receive a majority of the hotels contest this this process, there will be the creation of what's called the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. And then the jurisdictions would provide the money to that organization to decide how they would spend those funds. They are their dollars. They're the ones that are coming to the city to self-assess themselves to create a tourism effort. So what are the boundaries of this TID that that the city has led the effort through this private, public-private partnership with the Chamber of Commerce? This is, this was funding provided to the chamber and without the help of the chamber board, chamber executive, and Brianna Struckmeyer, their director of tourism, we would not be where where we are today. So it includes the entire Sutter and Yuba counties and all all those jurisdictions. Each one of the jurisdictions will have to approve their own resolution after this council meeting and their, the chamber has, are on those agendas in February, including jurisdictions that currently do not have hotels. So for example, Live Oak and Wheatland, they do not have hotels, but we want to ensure as this district is created, that if they do, that we're able to collect those funds and and the hotel motel lodging association will be successful. So as a, as part of this effort, there was a a management plan put together. Based upon current TOT collection, an increase of two percent would create a budget of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You have the management plan within the staff report. This is the breakdown and this is what that tourism, the lodging association will have to meet and provide annual reports to the city council. How do they oversee, how do they oversee those funds? They have a creation of a new Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. That board of directors, the majority of it has to be made up of lodging partners. So people that pay into that organization. So and a minimum of four lodging partners and they always have to be the majority. In addition to that, there's also a position for the director of Visit Yuba Sutter and then for two government representatives from jurisdictions within the TID. The Brown, the Brown Act and public records requirements do, this organization will fall under underneath the same requirements. Before this process actually occurred, there was actually a petition drive where all the hotels were notified and told, hey, this is an effort that the chamber is pursuing, based upon feedback we heard from the chamber. Sixty-six percent of hotels responded. It's actually higher than that. That number is based upon TOT collection. In some jurisdictions, because of how, they cannot release if one hotel makes up more than a certain percentage of the of the TOT. So I can tell you, it was more than sixty-six percent that actually returned petitions. And when I say sixty-six percent, it's not sixty-six percent of the hotels, it's sixty-six percent of what that assessed value would be as part of the tourism improvement district. And one of the things that I do want to remind the council, when this first came to our city council, the hotels, our local hotel, the Hampton Inn, said if we are going to move forward with this, number one, we want it to be a regional effort, and number two, we want the city to to fund a ten percent of your existing TOT. So currently, right now, the city collects approximately eight hundred thousand dollars annually in TOT. They would be asking for the city to make an investment of eighty thousand dollars annually or whatever the ten percent is of that year to that TID. So that is above and beyond the two hundred and fifty thousand. I have no doubt that we will see we will see an increase in TOT collection as they do their job. The plan is for the, not the plan, the state law allows a TID to be approved for five years the first time, and then if it's renewed, it's renewed for ten. Who's going to renew it? It'll be the hotels coming back before the city council saying, hey, this is something we we want to renew. Additionally, within the management district plan, it states that the city will be paid back for our initial investment of the fifty-three thousand and three hundred dollars that we put towards the Civitas contract. So what is the jurisdictional oversight as the cities and counties? Number one, it's the formation approval. There is an annual report that'll go back before the jurisdiction. Again, it has to fall under the Brown Act and a public records request. And if the district was terminated at any time, that would come back before the city council on on those annual basis. Finally, next steps, there are two resolutions this evening that are before you that have been proposed. One is the resolution of intense and the other one's resolution requesting consent. In the staff report and the resolutions, there's conflicting dates. It mentions the date February seventeenth and February twenty-first. The date is February twenty-first, which is your city council member, a city council meeting. There there will be a public meeting held that day. And then March twenty-first, there would actually be a public hearing here. And finally, if everything goes as the hotels have said that they support this, on April first, they would begin collecting their first assessments. And the first time that there would actually be funding towards this Yuba Sutter Lodging Association would be in the July, August timeframe. So this evening, I do want to mention, we are joined by a number of chamber staff and board members. We have Ricky Schaefer, their CEO, Brianna Struckmeyer, who is here and going to talk a little bit about what they've done with the funds that they have received. Additionally, we have three of their board members, I think actually executive committee members, Dale Eiler, Sandy Drown, and Mike Leggins, who are here. So at this time, I can answer any questions you might have. And then once you've asked any questions of me, I do know that the chamber would appreciate an opportunity to speak.
Any questions from the council at this time for Darren? Seeing none, who's going to start from the chamber? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for giving the voice, staff. This has been a long time, long time coming for this project, longer for the city than even the the staff or the the chamber members that are represented here today. I came in to this particular activity in January of two thousand and fourteen and it had already been almost one solid year in process. It had been approved in April, I believe, the the previous year, with some stipulations in regards to very clear goals that the the city council had in mind and the staff in making this investment and choosing to partner with the Chamber of Commerce to to reach this goal today. This is a large investment that the city has made. It was a long-term project. Just to give you a very brief summary without going into too much detail, though I can provide further detail at any time upon the the council's request. At that time, coming into this project and and learning very early on that with our goal of of reaching at the end of the funding cycle, the Hospitality Association or the the greater larger community agreeing to the self-assessment and understanding the value of forming a T-bid to to this region. I began meeting quickly after my installation in January of two thousand and fourteen with twenty-two of the local lodgers and the property owners. At that time, I quickly discovered that that where they were in that position today, if if we had a chance to to come before them, then it would not be a, we would not reach that goal. So working with them, meeting with them almost weekly for the course of almost nine months to to find out what would it take, what did they need to see from the chamber and the investment from the city that was coming through the chamber to to build a relationship, institution of trust, that they felt that getting to the end roll and and getting to the end goal of a T-bid would be something that we could have, especially with our, the majority shareholders taking a lead position and saying, yes, this is a project they'd like to see come to fruition. And we listened intently into into what their needs were for us to get to this point nearly three years later. And what it became overwhelmingly clear to me was that even though the with the city funding, there was an administration portion that was allowable to the Chamber of Commerce that we could take, that could go as part of administrative fund into our general fund as administration portion, that if we were going to invest in a tourism program, to have a true tourism program, to be able to to provide with national marketing, to start reaching relationships, to building activities, to start drawing traffic here, and to build a brand that would attract overnight visitors and have an end result of what the the hotels needed to see before we could gain their trust and create a relationship of faith, that it was going to take even more than what we had. And so it was at that time and with our board's approval that we took all of the funds that came from the city, starting that point, and invested back, taking, paying close attention to what the city wanted to see in regards to web development, visitor guides, and results, T-bid. We expanded that, we invested all of the money that came from the city back into tourism, a hundred percent of it, plus chamber funds. And if you know much about the chamber, we're a small nonprofit. We are funded by our chamber members. And we took not only the city's funding that you saw, the two hundred and eighty thousand, but to date, we've currently invested close to thirty thousand dollars per year of the city's general fund into, the city's, the the chamber's general fund into marketing efforts, which included bringing on a full-time person that could start delving and building those relationships with the hotels and lodgers, to building a marketing platform, to developing not only a first reiteration website, but also a second that was launched, to the visitor guides, to national publications, to building tour and agritourism projects here, to multiple tourism activities and events that have attracted people and have resulted in the heads and the beds that the lodgers wanted to see. A full-time marketing effort, which includes social media marketing on multiple platforms through our Director of Marketing, Brianna, who has a background in marketing. And so our investment of that two hundred and eighty thousand was the investment that we thought made us a responsible partner to the city to get us to this point, to where we could come before the hospitality is what I continue to call the Hospitality Association, which are the owners and managers of the lodging associations in this region, to get them to come together, not just in in the city of Yuba City, but as a region, and say overwhelmingly that this was a project that they wanted to get behind. We have our lead lodgers who have agreed to to continually to champion this effort. We've far exceeded what the initial goal that was required by law, the fifty point one percent or fifty plus one percent for the petition. At any one time, if you want to see specifics and dollar breakdown, we have that and I'm happy to provide that. But I can answer any specific question that you have in regards to where the funding has gone. But the funding has gone to all of those activities which helped to build a marketing brand of branding this region so that we could attract visitors here over the course of these three years, so that we could build that relationship with the the lodgers to get them to a point where they saw the value of having an expanded marketing brand and a formalized T-bid process, which they control.
Any questions for Ricky at the moment? Schaefer, okay, actually.
Oh, Steve.
She pretty much covered everything.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah.
But, Brianna, get up there and toot, Brianna, get up there and toot your horn a little bit, because I know you have lived this, breathed it, slept it, everything.
Minimal slept it. But, no, thank you. My name is Brianna Struckmeyer. I'm the Director of Visitor Services with Visit UBSutter in the chamber. And to reiterate, yeah, again, what Ricky said is that our top priority over the last, even in just my year and a half in this role, top priority has been getting our T-bid to this point, and then also ensuring completion by the designated timeline, so that we're not extending both time and resources into this project. So beginning collecting assessment by April 1st. Number two being the UBSutter Lodging Association. So bringing together the lodging representatives from all over the jurisdictions and forming an association that will govern the management of these funds. What I'm currently working on, which is taking up a good amount of my time, is the creation of our five-year marketing plan. So this is the plan that I will bring forward to the UBSutter Lodging Association, that they will approve, which will be our marketing strategy for the next five years for this plan, which is very exciting. A few things I just want to touch on, especially coming from a background of marketing, it's difficult, and especially with, yeah, I always tell people, it's my millennial impatience, but a year and a half to me, it's like I wanted to see results immediately. But it does take time to see things. And it's really exciting, and I'm happy to report to you that we're finally starting, I'm finally starting to see some of the fruits of my labor come to fruition, which is really exciting. So one of the things that's happening is that January of 2017, we have, for the first time, been featured in the California State Visitors Guide. There's a printout that you all received. It's a page, it's kind of confusing, but that actually is a page in a magazine. It is the Visitors Guide for the State of California, and we are one of the nine destinations featured in the Central Valley region, of which we are a part of. Another great thing is that in the Central Valleys, four pages that are covered, in the Fun Facts section, only five things are featured, and one of them is the iconic Sutter Buttes. So it's great to see us finally getting some recognition from the state and them seeing us as a player in this tourism market. Group Tour Magazine is a publication that's created for group travel destination makers. We are currently in an ad cycle that we began in October. This runs for a full year, and during the first quarter, we already received seven active leads from tour operating companies. So this is exactly where we want to partner ourselves in these areas, where we can generate leads and we can turn over some business to bring people into the area. Brand new is our participation in California Restaurant Month, and that's the other card that you received, is that next week, starting on Monday, is our first UBSutter Restaurant Week. This is a week when we can start bringing together our restaurateurs, hopefully in the future to do more things, but bring them together to begin promoting that we do have food as an attraction for visitors to this area. This opportunity provides creativity for the chefs and business owners. It provides a fun opportunity for the locals to get involved, and it also creates promotional opportunities, so the state is using their resources to send writers and bloggers to our area to cover this period. So please join us. There's a, part of our website is listed for UBSutter Restaurant Week, so you can visit any of the participating restaurants during that week's timeframe and request their UBSutter Restaurant Week specials. They're all featuring local products grown in the UBSutter region. So another great way that we're combining things. And my last thing is always to talk about the Swan Festival, so an event that started a few years ago with the intention of bringing in overnight visitors. This year in 2000, well, this past year in 2016, over 220 individual tour registrations were received. Those are just for our tours that run Friday through Sunday. We saw 177 out-of-town tour registrants. This is a 40% increase from 2015. So just in that sector of specific out-of-town visitors, 40% increase from the previous year. And over 50% of the total attendees traveled farther than two hours, which means these are really our sweet spot visitors, those that are coming in and staying the night, most of them staying both Friday and Saturday night. Attendees came this year, from this past year, from Canada, Oregon, Nevada, Washington, Minnesota, and all over California. So these are really great results for us, and thanks again for your time.
Yes.
Brianna, don't go too far. Did you cheat on this photo?
Did I cheat?
Is this your work right here?
That's my work.
Is this from the Farm to Fork Dinner?
That is from the Farm to Fork Dinner.
You know, one of the most incredible dinners that I've attended in our region. You did extremely well, helping put that together and probably most notably, putting it together. But for the public, you have to know that this is a must-support, must-attend event. It was an incredible evening, but the food was just one of those great moments in that evening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions for Brianna? Mine would be, is just for the public knows and is reminded, this is actually businesses assessing themselves with a partnership and a matching from us. Of course, we, because of that, we want an accountability for the funding that we put out as a city, taxpayers' money, actually, TOT funds. So, you know, and this is a large advertising and organized tool for the hotels to grow their businesses. It's something they didn't have access to in the past. And we, I have much faith in that this will definitely pay for itself many times over. Also, have you approached other jurisdictions yet for the 10%?
We talked to them about it.
I did try to get that done. I did try to get that done at the county when I was there. And if this had been established then, I know it would have been successful. So go after them and get it, because it may be small, but still, they need to be invested and invest in their amounts of debt, the success in it also. So.
Shame on me.
I didn't want to go that far, but he's definitely willing to. So with that, I need a motion. Well, I'll move it and ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous vote. Thank you, everybody, city, for the five years' work and everyone else on that. Okay, moving on to number 18, Paperless Agenda Management System. Terrell?
Oh, good afternoon, Mayor, or good evening, I guess.
It's into the evening now.
Mayor and council. So this is a subject that's near and dear to my heart, as well as your own. I am coming before you to authorize or to recommend the purchase of tablets and smartphones for the use of city council, and approve a supplemental appropriation to pay for the equipment, and a modified recommendation for, instead of discontinuing the technology allowance, to allow it to be used for any of the council members who choose not to use city equipment, but to use their own. So back in, the background is, in 2010, we were in the midst of the economic downturn, and staff throughout the city was tasked with or challenged with using innovative ideas to save on resources, staff time, and other costs. And so the City Clerk's Office and IT had got together, and we had seen programs regarding agenda management, using different types of tablets and, like Nook readers or Kindles. And also, they have larger laptops and things that were available through companies like Granicus that were selling agenda management systems. And so Brian Hanson and IT and I got together, and we found the iPad and the, what's called iAnnotate in Dropbox, where it goes really easy between council and staff. Previous to using this system, it would take pretty much three staff members, three days to get the agenda out and processed, and printing costs. Now, it takes one and a half, plus the departments to do it all agendized. And so, printing costs, besides, you know, we'd print 68,000 copies a year for the agenda, besides the cost of the paper, you have the wear and tear on your copiers. And so at the time, when, in 2010, Mr. Buckland was on the council at that time, we had recommended purchasing the equipment at that time to do this process, to save, be efficient, save staff time, save trees. And it was considered new technology at the time. And so in order to see whether it worked or not, council had elected at that time to purchase their own equipment. Since then, everybody knows that it's seven years ago, it's very established equipment. And we've basically, for the last seven years, made our model in administration on providing council with this information through this process. With a new council, it's, I think it's time to, inappropriate to bring back the fact that this is how we do business in the city, business forward, and ask that you let us provide you with equipment, so that we can provide you with a better service when you, for the people who do not have iPads, or the people who have different forms of digital access, there's problems. It doesn't all talk to each other that way. The iPad and the smartphones are standard city equipment. If you're head of office at City Hall, the City Hall, CD will be providing you computer equipment to work with. Anyway, but since you work out and about, I think it's very appropriate that you have a mobile device that you can access city information on. So I am, so that is my recommendation, to purchase the tablets and smartphones for the use by city council members if they so choose, and approve a supplemental appropriation for fiscal year 2017, 18, of $3,600 for one-time equipment and software costs, and $2,100 in ongoing monthly cost. That's annual. So, and then for those who choose to use the city equipment, then they would not be eligible for the technology allowance that was being charged or being given to council members, which is only $30 a month, which doesn't really cover most Wi-Fi fees.
Okay. With that, comments from council member?
Yeah, through the mayor. When I came onto the council, this was first being discussed. I was somewhat shocked that I would no longer, after my first council meeting, no longer be receiving a package. I think my first package had 480-some pages in it, that that wouldn't be being dropped by staff onto my doorstep at my house any longer, and that I would be able to look at something on an electronic device, flip through it, and access the internet at the very same time to gather more data. We deal with things like assembly bills and other pieces in our daily readings that deal with laws, and we need to become a little bit more familiar with those. So being able to sit down with one device, simply flip through that and gather the information, note up or make notes on your copies through iAnnotate and things like that, it was really mind-boggling. But at that time, the majority of the council adopted that. And as we progressed through time, we only had one council member, and I won't mention Tejmon's name out loud and in public, but he was one that resisted the technology. And it was evident that by having it, you could cut down on just your own time in having to chase down and make sure that you had the proper documents for any given meeting. Attending, we all attend various committees, and it's helpful to be able to get all of those electronically. Many of us deal with reading somewhere in the vicinity, in any given month, of a couple thousand pages of material, and reviewing probably many more documents through the various meetings that we might be in. The options, Terrell, that have been given to us through your research and the research with IT have been, I think, instrumental and made it certainly as smooth a transition as you possibly could make it. The equipment recommendations that you have in place, I think, are very fitting to build it, to move forward still at a pace where each one of the council members would have access to the equipment that makes our job certainly easier. And as the city begins streamlining into a more technology-driven environment, where you can actually now, I think, as of the first, pay your permit fees and apply for permits and everything online, it would only be expected, I think, that members of the council have an option for the equipment. I know I'm on my second iPad. The first one just simply wore out, didn't have the same robust features that this one does. And certainly, as the technology or the apps become more of a consumer of our, the storage space, sometimes those changes have to be made. And I would only recommend that when we look at that equipment, that we certainly look at one of the highest levels of storage, as many of these documents we keep in place for quite some time as reference materials, and be able to go back to that. But the option to be able to continue with a $30 per month for those of us that made an investment years ago, and certainly run with our own phones, would be the option that I would look at, along with the ability to buy for council members, both a pad, an iPad, and smartphone.
Any other comments from council members?
I just want to say, I'm all about going paperless, but I'm going to choose to stick with my own, only because I will need a tool belt to carry all my electronics, because I work for the state, so I have my separate laptop, my iPad, my iPhone, all from that entity as well. Then I have all my personal stuff, and I do a lot of remote business, and I stay in hotels. And when I go from one meeting to another, I literally have to lug my carry-on, because I have to take all my electronics with me for safety and security reasons. And I'm going to choose to stick with my own, because we've already kind of figured how my system works with all of that. Otherwise, literally, I'm going to need another carry-on. So I appreciate it very much, though. So.
Anybody else? Well, I will say that I'm the one that actually requested that this to be reconsidered, and for one reason, there are legal cases that are going on right now that are trying to, will make, if you have it on your own private devices, that the people will have access to your own information. I know it's, I just, I just don't like that. I mean, I use my computer at home. I use this little tiny thing right here. It works fine for what we're doing here. But I mean, if it was a request act, my computer, whatever is on there, would be available for viewing, although it would be under secure situations. I don't like that. And then the county, they issued their own separate ones a few years ago. They already provide it. It already is doing that. And then providing the options to keep your own, I think, is the great way to go. Probably eventually, as they wear out, then if he's on, might say, hey, city, it's time for you to do this or not. But I feel that it's, there should be a separation of government and personal access to the internet. I think it should be completely separated. So with that, I do have a speaker card. James?
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland and council members. As was stated by Terrell and, and Mr. Buckland, this was brought up before the city council at the October nineteenth, two thousand and ten meeting. And, well, all the council members, only Mr. Buckland was the one only still there, still here, I should say. And at that meeting, staff wanted to purchase eight fifteen-hundred-dollar laptops or tablets for paperless management. And after comment from concerned citizens and the cost and use of this equipment, Mayor Cash Gill made a motion to have city council members, as well as the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the city clerk, to purchase their own tablets or laptops, so they could use them for personal use as well as city use. As far as I know, it should still be that way. Adding smartphones to the request this time, I don't think should be needed. All council members already have a smartphone, and the added cost of six thousand dollars per year, plus thirty-six hundred dollars for initial purchase of the iPads, are not warranted by any kind of cost analysis by whatever paper they think they're gonna save. And the council members should already be practicing paperless management, as practiced by past city council members and staff. And as per your own city council reference guide, on page twenty-one, it states that, "Equipment and technology", with the, states the following, "With the advancement of technology, council adopted a paperless agenda in two thousand and ten, using an in-house automated agenda management process." The city council elected not to have the city provide devices to the staff or council members for this process. Staff is available to council to discuss and assist new council members with the process of device selection. And then the paragraph right under that says, "For use of public resources", it states the following, "Council members shall not be used public resources such as staff time, equipment, supplies, or facilities for private gain or personal use." So any equipment purchased by the city would be property of the city and only used by city business. An audit or record of purchase would have to be maintained and checked on a regular basis. No personal business could be allowed on these devices. In conclusion, I think the cities of Yuba, the citizens of Yuba City should not have to provide these items to our city council members. The money that would have to be used for these expenses could be used for more urgent expenses, like our tourism, or pension costs, or critical expenses in the coming years. Past council members were able to provide their own phones and tablets or laptops to access the records they needed, and still be able to use it for personal use as well. So I think the current council members should be able to do the same thing. Thank you.
James, I, I understand your approach on this, but my, I would have to buy a whole new computer setup, or figure something out on mine anyway. And I don't think that's a burden that should be put on a council member, myself, or like, like that. The county made the decision, I followed through with what exactly you said. All, all business was on that, had to be for, for the county, I did that. So, that procedure can be done.
I just, it's kind of a burden, you have to carry around two phones, or two tablets.
So what?
That'd be worse for you, huh?
I have a business connected to this one.
Yeah.
And it's my personal, and it's a business. I don't want the county, the city to be able to, I don't want to do city business on this, and I've had to. And I don't think it's right that, that it, by that choice, I'd be required to do county business or city business on that. It would be required that I do that.
Yes.
To fulfill. I think that's wrong.
It says in your guide.
No, it's, all it says is that I can't do personal business on county stuff.
Correct.
Exactly. And I followed through with that in the past.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification, he's exactly right, it is in the guide, that's why it's back before the council this evening as a policy decision to amend what you read. So everything you read is absolutely correct.
But this is an amendment to that, and addressing those conditions.
You're paying a hundred dollars a month for your cellphones for each of you? That's more than I think you should have to pay. I don't pay that much, but I get everything. But I guess that's the city, you don't, money's not an option.
And it's an op, and it's a, it's an option, it is not a requirement for them to do that. It's an option.
Okay.
So.
Do you have any other questions for me?
Any other questions, comments? With that, I need a motion, or, yes?
To make the gentleman happy, I'm still just taking the thirty-dollar-a-month technology. Just, just want to let you know to keep, to make, make you happy. Thank you.
With that? Looking for an action?
I would move a recommendation that, for those requiring such, that we approve the purchase of tablets and smartphones for use by the council. Given the guidelines as indicated in the staff report, and approve a supplemental appropriation to cover the costs for those, not to exceed thirty-six hundred dollars, which is obviously going to be somewhat short of that, and then the ongoing costs of twenty-one hundred dollars annually, which, I haven't done the math real quickly, but the thirty dollars a month by at least three members may, may come up to that cost, and, along with the, with the other fees. But then allow the, or to accept the technology allowance that's currently provided at thirty dollars per month, per council members that provide their own smartphone and own tablet.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. If there's any more, no more comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? And then, and the other comment, like you said, it would definitely be significantly less, and not to exceed, thank you for including that. Okay, unanimous vote.
Moving on to
city council reports, council member Buckland, what did you? Oh, I'm sorry, the number nineteen. Business of the city council appointments to boards and commissions. Okay, we met, Councilman Diball and I are the interview committee for the planning and economic development committee members. We had some phenomenal applicants with varied degrees of, just, just a lot of different types of skill sets. So, so we had to make decisions based on some really good skill sets that were out there. And I have to find it here, I don't have it on mine, mine shut off again. Yeah, that's the technology I'm dealing with. Our choice was to reappoint Daria Ali to planning, Jenna Shannon, reappoint. Dale Eiler will now be a new member, he's sitting out here, so is Daria. He has a, is a real estate commercial background, so he will bring some of that to the economic development process. And then for economic development, we reappointed Christine Ivory, which is the agricultural background, and also had a lot of dealings with the Farm-to-Fork, worked with them on that, which is phenomenal. The foods were just awesome from our area. Todd Reiman, reappointed him, he is a, an innovator, and does development of products, helps people get ideas to market, and makes them, thank you. And then Vinnie Joel, she is, works at Fremont Rideout and deals with fundraising, but her skill sets have within it collaboration between educational, and making sure that high school through college up to age of twenty-six are brought into career paths, and she will be tasked with collaborating between all the different forms of higher education, including private schools, technical schools and things, to bring them all together in some way to be, participate in the economic development process, rather than just a government, uh, school systems. So hopefully, this will expand the scope and ability for economic development, get more people involved in that process. So this is the recommendation of the screening committee. And if there's any questions or comments by other council members, I would definitely enjoy hearing them. If not, action.
Move to approve?
Okay.
Second?
Well, actually, Sean Harris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, with that, now, now we can go with the city council reports, Councilman Buckland.
On the twelfth of this month, attended a press conference for the announcement and unveiling of the Yuba City Bears. This is a wood, like, wood bat league that will complement the Marysville Gold Sox. They will play at the same stadium over in, in Marysville. That will allow for sixty games of collegiate wood bat baseball in our community. This will be a rivalry of sorts, and we're looking forward to, to that team. The public is being asked to engage in naming their mascot, the bear, by some name. I provided one, and it was quickly shot down the other day, and I won't repeat it here. But it's going to be an, an awesome opportunity that will interface, I think, very, very well with our tourism efforts here, as we will be engaged with teams like Chico, Lincoln, other areas. It will grow over time, and I think will be just one of those marquee events that, that will be available to our community. In nineteen forty-seven, the Yuba City Bears won the championship here, and beat out Chico, I believe, at the, at the time, for that championship. They played the next year and lost to Marysville Giants, but it has a great history. It just took a little bit of a break away from our community. But we welcome back the Yuba City Bears. Also, and, and I must say, all of the other, the mayor, the vice mayor, and all of the council was at that, at that event. And even though it was cold, somewhat rainy, it didn't dampen the spirits of, of all those in attendance. I'm not gonna take a, a lot of time to, to discuss a meeting we had with Caltrans at District Three headquarters. This meeting was set up by the mayor, so I'll allow him to, to talk to that issue, but a very productive meeting over at District Three Caltrans, talking about the future and, and what is coming on our state highways in our community. And then, on Thursday morning, I'm gonna depart for Washington, DC, at the request of one of our local residents, who invited me as a, as a past mayor, to be able to attend the inauguration of our forty-fifth president, and will be also in the, as one of the guests of our congressman, John Guaramendi. So, look forward to that event, be returning on, on Saturday, hopefully with a whole new appreciation for the transition of government, as it takes place on, on Friday. So looking forward to that.
Okay, let's see, I gotta go back to that page. I think it is Manny Cardoza, Councilman Cardoza.
Yes, like John said before, we attended the Bears ceremony, full council was there, was a, like I said, nice cold, wonderful day. Great time. Council, we attended the gala last Friday night, that was also a wonderful event, got to see a lot of people, great turnout, a lot of people honored. I recently attended my first regional housing authority board meeting. Got to meet the commissioners, and got to introduce myself, and, and get to speak with all them. Was just a short meeting, we passed a couple of payments that need to be paid, so it was short and sweet. I'm gonna have the honor of going with Sean and Steve for the next couple of days to the new mayor's and councilman institute. So hopefully, teach me how to be a better councilman and a future mayor. It's gonna be a fun couple of days. And then last but not least, Terrell, on January first, we had approximately sixty people show up, and twenty of us jumped into the Goshay Aquatic Park swimming pool. I would personally like to thank Brad for allowing this, and Ann Gillian and her staff for getting up New Year's morning at seven-thirty, seven o'clock, come down there and open it up, and take everything out, and, you know, especially New Year's Day, it was a wonderful time, we had, all had fun. And hopefully, we'll have a twenty-five-year anniversary, and it was a great time, and that's it for me.
Councilman Harris?
Yes, thank you. Last few weeks, I've been fighting, I don't know what, what I've caught, transitioned through about three or four different colds or flus, or whatever else, but in addition to, I'm not contagious.
He said that last time, I caught whatever he had.
But I too attended the Chamber Gala at the Clusa Casino, and it was a wonderful time, we had a great time, saw a lot of good people. It's kind of like a, almost like a reunion, everybody comes together for a great cause, and it was really beneficial and a fun time. It was my pleasure to be there on behalf of the city. Attended my first Beal Military Liaison Council meeting out there at the Sopatay. And as our representative to Beal Air Force Base, we're looking forward to getting started on that program, it's just one of the introductory meeting for that. Again, Bears baseball grand opening and their announcement is a very good time, very community-oriented. We are looking forward to the rivalry with those folks that are already kind of getting cocky on the other side of the river, want to put them in their place, looking forward to that. And then, still working on, meeting a bit was canceled, but the Gilizer Drainage District folks, I'm looking forward to meeting them and being, participating, so. That is it for me for now.
Okay, Vice Mayor Diball.
Same thing as far as the press conference for the new baseball game. Was very cold out there, but it was a great event. Glad to see the team out there, and looking forward to those future games. Gala, same thing, it was a nice get-together, we were all there, had a good time. Some of the meetings, we did have actually a LAFCO meeting with, and it followed right after the holidays. We are moving forward with continued meetings for the annexation, informing the public regarding all of the processes. Our next meeting is scheduled now for January twenty-sixth, so next week, so. And we'll continue with that process. As far as anything else, we had the boards and commissions interviews, we've made our selection. Wonderful, wonderful group of people, and I was so glad to see all of the applicants actually reaching out and to be participating in doing more for the community and just getting more involved. So I hope to see more applications the next time around. The other addition, I just wanted to let folks know, we had the summer program, the summer at City Hall program that was launched last year in June. We are now already in the prep to go ahead and get that going. We want to get an early start so that we get the applicants and being able to interview all the kids, to make that selection process as early as May, so that there's preparation for the kids to go right into, as soon as the school season is over. Other than that, I think that covers the two weeks.
And just normal busy life.
Normal busy life, getting ready to send my child off to college.
Yep. Well, this has had a great holiday season, Christmas time, and now that we're back, full, full bore. We're, the city I know is, has a very aggressive meeting scheduled for us over the next three or four weeks. But January ninth, as we said, the boards and commission interviews, we have that. On the twelfth, the, I, I went to the Regional Water Authority Meeting, RWA, down at Citrus Heights. Had some good news regarding some of the water decisions at the state, and then some bad news, they're still gonna try to regulate this to the max and just ignore the amount of water that we have, and say, we're gonna implement some of these things anyway. And of course, we did expect them to try to do that. So we're gonna be working at some of those things that are unreasonable to be not implemented. Then, and that is the reason why I was a half hour late to the Bears baseball team meeting. Ran a little late, I was riding with an employee, and I was not gonna tell him to speed. So, I did not want to do that. I think a good name, how about the Carebe, no, forget it, Care Bears, you know, that, I don't think that would go over very well. Something like Black Bear, Grizzly Bear, or something, you know, anyway. So, but that was a great event. Um so, but that was a great event, um and looking forward to uh attending some of those uh games. January thirteenth, met with uh top leaders and pioneers of Caltrans, uh District Three, to dis- discuss many projects that are on the books, uh and also some uh new ideas that we did present and some um ways to approach it. We also tried to um in this discussion protect some of the funding that is in our area that could be pulled away under certain conditions and if uh we we do certain approaches and partnerships with legislators and stuff, we can keep that uh funny and money and get it programmed and funding in our area. Uh so we're looking, uh, we we came back very, very pleased with um their answers uh to what we could do uh on the questions that we had and the projects. Um also, on the thirteenth, we uh got to uh be part of, some of us, the new Sutter County Judge, uh David Ashby, sat sat in there and uh finally have another judge in there that uh we s- sounds like credentials and experience is phenomenal, especially for our community. And then, of course, the Chamber Gala, uh we were on the list for an award, but Live Oak beat us out, and I must say that their efforts definitely warranted their um uh getting that because of the um the effort that they had there, uh so um they did very well um on that. And and I was actually part of the process way back when, on the highway going through there and the improvements, uh two thousand ten with Caltrans at that time, selecting who would get it. So Live Oak definitely uh were selected uh above Yuba City this time, so on their innovation. With that, I have nothing else, unless staff has uh something to add, uh meeting adjourned.